One, two, three, showtime. Welcome folks to the November nineteen, two thousand and nineteen Board of Selectment Meeting. And we'll commence with a roll call.
Diane Kennedy here.
Governor McCarthy here.
Carrie Thompson here.
Jack Creighton here. Okay, and for those who wish to join us in a pledge of allegiance, we welcome you to stand yourself.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Being said, uh, meeting will begin with any public comments, uh, public comments for any items that are not on the agenda. So, are there any? Okay, not seeing any, we'll go to the next item, which is a very pleasant item for us to cover when we do, which is the introduction of new staff. Um, and the new staff, Fireman Stephen McGovern, Brad McCovany, James Farrell, Travis Francore, RTF, Andrea Ben, Lisa McGonigal, and Joel Wolfe, DPW. Hope you didn't mind me reading that.
I don't mind at all.
It's on the agenda.
I don't mind at all.
And that I'll turn it over to Miriam.
And I'm just gonna introduce them and they'll tell you a little bit about themselves. So first, if I could have firefighter McGovern. Case.
Hi, everybody, so my name's Stephen, um, thank you for having me here. Uh, I am twenty-eight, uh, been a paramedic now for about two years, I've been with Cohasset now for almost two months, yeah, almost two whole months now. Um, transferred from, excuse me, not transferred, came from Falmouth first, did about six months down there and decided to be here in Cohasset and it's a great little town you guys have going on. Thanks for having me.
Thank you, welcome.
You're welcome very much, Stephen. Uh, glad to have you aboard.
Any questions?
Do you have any questions of us?
No.
We're really glad to have you, so welcome.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And glad you're here tonight for us to do so.
And now firefighter, firefighter Coveney.
Hello, everyone, good evening. Uh, my name's Brad Coveney, I last time get butchered a lot, but that's fine. Um, been a paramedic for approximately a year now. Um, I was actually a former, um, situat, uh, police officer, um, for about two years. Uh, didn't like it, uh, kept my EMT certification going, went to paramedic school, um, and decided to pursue, uh, a career of, uh, fire. I grew up in Situate, I'm very familiar with Cohasset, uh, I look forward to, uh, working in the town for many years to come.
Wonderful, Brad.
Absolutely.
And you also look like you may be on duty.
I am, I am right now, yes, sir.
Anybody wanna get checked up? Uh, Brad, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
And who's next?
Firefighter Farrell.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Jimmy Farrell. Uh, I have mainly a special, uh, special education background. I worked, um, with individuals on the autism spectrum for about six and a half years as an ABA therapist. And I made a complete change, uh, still have a passion for that. Here I am in Cohasset, I was lucky enough to land a job, uh, hired on March fourth. And that's pretty much it.
Looks like we were lucky enough to have you, so thank you for being here tonight, welcome to working in our community.
Thank you very much, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and our next one is Travis Francore.
Hi. Uh, I'm Travis Francore, I'm forty-six, uh, I worked down at the RTF, uh, started October ninth, went down there for a month. Uh, before that, I worked for a financial company, Mass Financial Services in Boston. So it's a big change, well, I changed my whole career, got my CDL license, so, uh, and I was lucky enough to join the crew down at the DPW.
Great, welcome.
Okay, great, good.
You like dogs.
I like other people's dogs.
There you go. And the next person is Andrea Ben, who is our administrative assistant for the DPW.
Hi, everyone. Hi, Andrea, um, I'm twenty-eight, I just moved to the area, I moved to Situate about a month ago. So, um, I was lucky enough to get a job in Cohasset, which is the next town over, love this town as well. Um, before I came here, I worked in Boston, I was doing, um, esthetician work, um, I had my own business doing makeup for weddings. And before that, I was working for the state treasurer's office. Um, so when I came here and moved, I wanted to get back into public service, so now I'm here.
Great.
Great.
And I'm very happy to be here, thank you.
We're happy to have you, so welcome, Andrea.
Welcome.
Yes.
Andrea's feeling what was Mary Snow's.
Oh, okay, good.
Got it.
Good. I think the, and the person who had the job before you was there, what, thirty-five?
Thirty-one years.
Thirty-one years, so like, you just began.
And our next new employee is Lisa McGonigal, and Lisa is our newest employee, she started last week.
Hello, my name's Lisa McGonigal, and, um, I came from a property management background. Before that, I was in the high-tech industry at Inlog Devices. And, um, very happy to join, um, the Cohasset DPW team.
Great.
Welcome, Lisa, good.
Welcome, thanks. And last but not least is Joel Wolfe, who is also in the DPW.
Wonderful.
Hey, I'm Joel, um.
Welcome, Joel.
I just graduated in twenty-seventeen, um, I worked at a lumberyard for, uh, three or four years.
Hmm.
And then I was down at the highway department for a few months, and I've been at the RTF since August, I think.
So you graduated in two thousand seventy and from Cohasset?
No, I'm from Eastbridge, Oregon.
In, yeah, okay, great, I see. Good, welcome.
Welcome.
Glad to have you here, and thank you for coming tonight.
This is the latest crop of our new employees.
Love it.
Okay.
I, I, I just wanna say, I'm, I'm just so impressed with their public speaking skills. I think if I had been asked to do that and come before the Board of Selectment at the beginning of my career, I would've been very nervous. You all did a great job.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, and I'd like to have everybody just give a little applause for all of you. Welcome.
Carrie, you guys been impressed this week?
Yes, yes.
Yes. Okay, wonderful, the next, uh, next one, we go from exciting to really exciting, which is the, uh, two thousand twenty tax classification hearing. Uh, one that we wait for eagerly every year, so it was, and, uh, I need to begin the hearing with the, uh, read it, hearing notice. Um, and we'll be discussing this with the Director of Assessing, Mary Quill. The Board of Selectment for the Town of Cohasset will conduct a public hearing under Chapter Twenty, Section Fifty-six, as amended by Chapter Seventy-nine of the Acts of nineteen eighty-three on Tuesday, November nineteen, two thousand and nineteen, at seven oh five in the office of the Board of Selectment. The purpose of the hearing will be to review the issue of allocating the local property tax among the five property classes for fiscal year two thousand twenty. The Board of Selectment and the Board of Assessors will provide information regarding the various policy decisions available. All interested persons and/or parties wishing to be heard will be afforded the opportunity to be heard at this time. And that will then, with that, we'll begin the hearing, and I'll turn the conversation over to Mary Quill.
Very good, I'm Mary Quill, Director of Assessing. And my chair, Alison Sylvia Othia, and my assistant assessor, Rachel Tyler.
Welcome, Alison, welcome, please.
Moral support, thank you. Okay, so the purpose of the classification hearing is to allocate the tax levy across all property classes. Residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal property. However, we don't have any open space per se classified as open space. The first, um, step is to break down the properties by class. The residential class is valued at tw- two point eight billion dollars, representing ninety-three percent of the overall value. Commercial is a hundred and eighty-two million, five point nine two oh eight percent. Industrial is a million six fifty, point oh five percent, oh, point oh five three four. And personal property is twenty-seven million, and that is represented by point eight eight oh four percent. So for the purposes of this hearing, the commercial, industrial, and personal property would be treated as one. So on the lower section of the page, the residential's a two point eight bil- billion at ninety-three percent, and the remaining two hundred and eleven million is the six point eight percent of commercial, industrial, personal property, which we call CIP. Okay, so in order to, um, determine, um, the levy limit that we have to raise through real estate taxes, we have to take last year's levy limit, which was thirty-seven million, increase it by two and a half under Proposition Two and a Half, allows us to increase the levy by that amount, which is nine hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Our certifi- our growth was certified at five hundred and nine thousand dollars. That brings our levy limit to thirty-eight million eight twenty-four two thirty. So that is the levy without the debt exclusion, so we have an ongoing debt, um, figure. And this is an estimate, it should be pretty close, but a million two sixty, two thirteen, it's added to that levy to bring our maximum, um, levy with debt at forty million eighty-four thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars. Possible count, um, which plays a part in this, to, uh, three thousand forty-eight residential properties, two hundred and eighty-six commercial, industrial, and personal property, bringing that total to thirty-three, thirty-four. But to determine the, um, tax rate, we take the, um, total resident, total valuation, which is the three, three billion eighty-eight million two hundred and sixty-six thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars. And we take the levy that we just determined, forty million, divided by the three billion, comes out with a rate of twelve dollars and ninety-seven cents per thousand dollars of assessment. So this page proofs it out by class, so the residential portion of the levy is thirty-seven million, because it's ninety-three percent of that figure, divided by the residential value of two point seven billion, gives us the rate of twelve ninety-seven. The bottom exercises the commercial share. Take the forty billion, forty million dollar levy by the six point eight percent, come up with two point seven million in, um, commercial, industrial, personal property, divided by the commercial, industrial, personal property value, come up with the same, twelve dollars and ninety-seven cents. So that's just an exercise to proof it out. Now, the next page is the, um, calculation of the split rate. So there's a provision that allows us to shift the tax burden to the commercial class by fifty percent. So the commercial, industrial, personal property is six percent. When we increase that to ten percent, that's the maximum share of the levy that they would bear. But if they're gonna bear ten percent, then the remaining ninety percent has to be borne by the residential class. So, that being said, we get a minimum, a calculation is made, I won't bore you with that, but the calculation is that the ninety-six percent minimum residential factor has to be borne by the ninety-three percent residential class. So, the exercise in that is we take the forty million dollar levy, determine the residential share, which is thirty-seven million, and then we apply the residential factor to that. So that reduces the, their share of the levy from thirty-seven million to thirty-five million. So we take that thirty-five million divided by the residential value, and we get a rate of twelve dollars and fifty cents, as opposed to the twelve ninety-seven that we already came up with. So if we're gonna shift that burden that way, the commercial's gonna have a larger burden. Their, um, share of the levy, which was two point seven million, is now increased to four point one million. Divided by the two hundred and eleven million dollar value gives them a tax rate of nineteen dollars and forty-seven cents. So their twelve ninety-seven became nineteen forty-seven, and the residential share, twelve ninety-seven, became twelve fifty. So, hence the, the burden. So the minimum residential factor is ninety-six percent. It can be anywhere between ninety-six percent and a hundred percent, so we could pick a number. If we were serious about splitting the rate, we could make calculations and determine it. So the right-hand column is a less severe impact of that. Twelve dollars and seventy-six cents for the residential, and, uh, fifteen dollars and ninety-four cents for the commercial, industrial, and personal property. Any questions?
Two, two questions.
Yes.
When we certify the new growth?
Yes.
How, what's the process for doing that?
It's part of the recap.
Right.
So we determine, um, what the value, previous value was. We go out and do inspections on all of the new construction.
Right.
Determine what the value increase is, um, and lit- literally make an Excel spreadsheet and determine by property what the increase is for that. It goes before the Department of Revenue for review.
Okay.
They make sure that the amount of growth we took doesn't exceed what the increase was from last year, the, from this, last year to this year.
I think you're pretty good at your job, by the way.
Thank you, thank you, I fi- I get it.
Yeah, I think you do as well.
I think I can, I think I can answer all the questions. So they, they did certify our growth at, um, a lot less than last year, but it was five hundred and nine thousand, um, in tax revenue. So that was about forty million, I think, forty, something like, oh, forty million. Um, okay, so that's the calculation of this, did you get another question?
No.
Okay, so that's the calculation of the split rates. The next page gives you the impact of that. So the first column is if we just had the uniform rate, um, which is typical. The bottom, um, is a million dollar property, so whether it's residential or commercial, that million dollar property with the uniform rate has a tax bill of twelve thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. If we applied the, the middle two columns, uh, if we applied the split rate, which is the maximum that we can charge the commercial, um, the million dollar property is gonna, the residential million dollar property is gonna have a savings of four hundred and seventy dollars at the expense of the commercial bearing an additional sixty-five hundred dollars. So it's pretty severe, and if you look at how many million dollar properties in town, that's, there's a lot of people fit in that category. Uh, the other one is the twelve dollars and seventy-six cents and the fifteen dollars and ninety-four cents, less severe, but it's still pretty significant, two hundred and ten dollars saving for a million dollar property, but that's residential, and an additional twenty-nine seventy for the commercial, industrial, and personal property. And that. Oh, that, so the last page I did a, uh, little, a little example of what the impact of the, um, increase in rate and the debt exclusion, what's attributed to the debt exclusion. So last year's rate was twelve ninety, last year's average value for, just for a single family, was nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand eight hundred dollars. So their average tax bill based on that number was twelve thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars. The rate this year is going up to twelve ni- if we, you know, if that's what it ends up at. It is an estimate until the recap is finalized, but if it's twelve ninety-seven, the average value this year is a million five, million five thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars. So that has gone up. The average tax bill with that rate would be thirteen thousand thirty-eight, it's a difference over the last year of four hundred and twelve dollars, three percent. The debt exclusion at a million.
Okay, can I just?
Yep.
So is that increase impacted by, uh, the lesser growth, you know, of new growth? And, or is it impacted by the increased value of a property, or what impacts that?
Okay, a lot of thing, a lot of variables. So, um, the growth, um, so certain properties are increasing for growth, certain properties are increasing just by market adjustments after our sales review. Um, directly, the, does the growth impact that? Yeah, it inc- impacts the new value, but not one-to-one, it doesn't. So our value, our overall, our average value has increased, our tax rate has increased minimally, um.
Is it because largely because of the value of the houses and properties have increased?
The values.
Is that why we're getting, uh, three percent?
Yeah, we don't have a straight across the board that everyone's going up three percent. So when we do our sales review, we look at, like, locational, what, like, few, past few years have been the ocean, the ocean, the ocean, the ocean. Um, but they're getting a break this year, nothing's happening on the ocean this year. It's already, they've already maxed it out, I think.
Right.
But, no, so different neigh- this year, the, the area that was, um, impacted this year clearly was the, uh, close proximity to the village. Hillside.
Hillside, yeah.
South Main, Stockbridge, you know, Fernway, like, all central, more centrally located. And it was mostly our middle neighborhoods, so it wasn't the high end, it wasn't the low end, it was probably the four neighborhoods in the middle.
Mm-hmm.
Um, people are gonna go up, not everybody's going up.
Right.
People going up different percentages, but we'll have all the values available, people will come and see what the new value is and all of that.
When will those be available, just for the public in case they wanna?
Well, they can come in whenever, yeah, they can come in anytime.
To see what their new value is.
Our values are certified, our growth is certified, so we have the numbers.
Just so the public knows, yeah.
It would be better if the recap was done and then we'd know the firm numbers, we'd know the tax rate and all of that, but, you know, we make it available if somebody calls, so. Um, so does that impact it? Yes, it does, but the three percent that's represented here isn't across the board that everybody goes up three percent. Okay, and then the, the debt exclusion, the million two sixty, um, if you calculate the, the percentage, the amount of the tax rate that's attributed to that debt, it's forty-one cents. So out of the twelve ninety-seven, forty-one cents is attributed just to that debt exclusion. And it's a descending, hopefully goes down every year, it has for the past few.
Mm-hmm.
So the m- average million dollar value, forty-one cents, it's costing four hundred and ten dollars for a million dollar property to pay for that debt. So it's, I don't know what significance, people wanna know that stuff, but, um, so that's pretty much it. Any questions from there?
Yeah, any questions, Diane?
No, I just, just, kinda for the record, when we did our budget, um, what's it called? Our budget document that we did in September, we, um, we, um, committed to a uniform tax rate as, as we have done in the past. Um, just because of, to bear, you know, to have the commercial businesses bearing the extra load when they use less of the services and it just makes sense for us.
My board did recommend, um, a uniform tax rate, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Good.
Okay, so you need a vote on this now?
We need a vote, but we're gonna keep the hearing open until the recap is done, because, um, the debt is estimated debt, probably close, but in case it changes, and I have the LE five that the board signed, but I won't know the excess levy capacity until the recap is done. So I think if we continue it till the next meeting, we should have it by then, and you could sign then, and. Yep.
Yeah.
We can take the vote today, but.
Well, why don't we wait to do it properly, then we'll wait till we get to the, if the recap's done, you give us final figures.
Well, you can make the vote for the, that you want a uniform rate, but the excess levy capacity is part of that other form.
Okay.
So I don't want you to sign it now, and then you have to alter it.
So you need a motion to, uh, apply a uniform rate to our tax, um, structure for this year, does anyone wanna make that motion?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Go ahead.
We'd like to move that we apply a uniform tax rate to the, uh, tax rate in the town of Cohasset.
Okay.
Second, any discussion? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That's unanimous, Tracy? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now you need a motion to continue the hearing? We're gonna have that from somebody?
Yeah.
Till, are we gonna continue it till a specific date is when we need to do that, right?
December third.
Is, is it?
Is it December third, would that be sufficient for you?
Yep.
Is it a December third, is it actually a continuance, or is it just to keep it open for this one, make sure the language is proper?
Yeah, I guess if we.
Think you have to continue to a date certain?
Yeah, I, you're effectively continuing the hearing, I just know a little.
I'd move that we continue this hearing until December third.
Second.
Any, any discussion? Those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That's unanimous, Tracy? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good thorough court again this year, and look forward to seeing you on December third.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you. And thank you to your staff, did all the good work on this. All right. The next item on the agenda, um, is a, uh, a public, uh, hearing, a cable license renewal. This is the Verizon contract, I'll read the, uh, notice. The Board of Selectmen of the Town of Cohasset, Massachusetts, as the Cable Television License Issuing Authority, will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November nineteen, two thousand and nineteen, at seven oh five PM at the Cohasset Town Hall Selectmen's Office, forty-one Highland Avenue, Cohasset, Massachusetts pursuant to two oh seven CMR three point, uh, oh five, and any applicable cable television renewal license laws, regulations, or requirements regarding the renewal of the cable television license of Verizon New England Incorporated. Any applications, reports, statements, and/or amendments in the possession of the town to be considered at the hearings shall be available for public inspection and reproduction at a reasonable fee at the Board of Selectmen's Office during regular Town Hall hours. And with that, that'll begin the hearing, and I will turn this then over to, if you'd introduce yourselves, and we begin.
Me, me. It's Nicole Roth, uh, Eastwood Street, uh, now Secretary of the, uh, Cable Advisory Committee.
Great.
Corey Evans, the new President of the Cable Advisory Committee.
Whoa. Yeah, that was quick as lunch.
That was very, very.
That was fast.
There's a lot of competition.
Who doesn't like you?
Yeah, helping in transition, yeah. Um, yep, we're here, um, uh, the Cable Advisory Committee has approved, uh, and voted approved, um, that, uh, what is it, it's, um, sorry. We approve the renewal of the television license agreement for Verizon New England, um, on behalf of the Town of Cohasset. And so we've got to present with you the terms, um, of, or the term of the contract, which will be a five-year period. Um, so Verizon is, um, granted us, um, a five-year contract effective November thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, and, um, uh, some of the terms of the, the contract, um, are that we will be increasing our, um, initial grant money from Verizon, um, approximately thirteen thousand dollars a year, um, and we will also be getting subscriber gross revenue fees of five percent. And, uh.
So this license, you know, uh, obviously allows Verizon to operate in the town, uh, we're granting the license to them so that they can use our public license, whatever. Um, it's basically exactly, it's similar license to the towns around us, roughly, it's exactly the same thing, we've been advised. Um, and the important things as from the Cable Advisory Board is that it does give us increased funding for our public access TV station, um, both for capital improvements and for ongoing, and it's more in line with what other towns are getting. We were honestly really far behind on that. So, um, when it comes to operating in the town and funding the, uh, the public access TV station, it's a, we've been advised, it's a very good, you know, new license.
How much more are we getting then, under this contract, right?
On a new contract, which is half of the contract of Comcast, Comcast has been a ten-year contract, uh, but we're gonna be getting sixty percent more revenue and grant money, and about, what was about forty percent determined overall subscriber gross revenue?
It's about fifty, fifty-two thousand dollars more in, in revenue, and about, um, what was it, uh?
Did you say fifty-two thousand dollars more over?
Per year.
Fifty, so you, this contract will give your organization, you mean, eight thousand, fifty-two thousand dollars more than they have now?
Correct.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, uh, it's.
Were we getting a lot, less than we should?
We were getting, um, we were getting, yeah, exactly, we were way below what other towns were, I mean, it was.
Pretty good little raise.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
That's good, so we'll be having you all broadcasting everything then, right? You're putting up a satellite.
Yeah, so, you know, we're excited to, to present, you know, obviously this is a board that was a little bit in default status.
Yeah.
So we are excited to bring you to, to present to you a capital plan, um, with kinda what we, uh, you know, it's foreseeable going forward in the near future. Um, and, uh, we're excited to kinda get things back, move forward properly.
It's a great beginning, Carrie.
It seems like a great fiscal decision, just curious, has there been any, any discussion with Verizon about getting any type of possible online viewing options, like live streaming or availability for people that don't actually have cable at their homes?
Right, so in, in this contract, so right now, no.
Okay.
Um, but this contract does say that if Verizon themselves, I'm just talking about Verizon, not us.
Okay.
If Verizon themselves offers stuff to be broadcast to other towns through the Verizon platform.
Right.
We would then get that right as well. However, independently, we are able to have our own video-on-demand system that is not run through Verizon, but is run through one-four-three TV.
Gotcha.
That is something we're working on, excited about. There are some licensing, um, sensitivities to that, because, you know, our funding is for broadcast, not for YouTube.
Right.
So we do have to be sensitive to that, but we're gonna work within those parameters, and we're excited to have video-on-demand services.
Um, in addition to that, Comcast has promised to give us, um, access to video on de- streaming within forty months.
I appreciate that, yeah.
And typically it'll take less time, um, and also in this contract, Verizon has promised us to have video on demand access, um, as long as it's, um, fair and equal to everyone else's cable, um, contracts throughout the state. So, um, if another town has, is going to get video on demand, then they will be able to provide the technology and, um, for us to have that as well. Um, we do have the capability to stream now, we have the technology, we just have to set it up. And so we have set up a YouTube channel in the meantime.
Yay.
Um, and as long as we broadcast our, um, public access channel, um, our meetings, you know, our government, school education meetings, then we can, um, therefore also stream other materials through other, you know, um, mediums.
Good.
Great.
Very good.
So video on demand will come, um, um, in time, I don't have a definite date, but I think in three years' time, we'll definitely have video on demand.
Yeah, no, it's just a broader discussion we need to have, not related to what you're saying tonight, but
Yeah.
a lot of people are now cutting cable contracts, a lot of people don't have Verizon or Comcast, you know, they're, they've moved on to things like Hulu and Netflix and Disney Plus and we need to adapt.
That's a broad discussion, because that, that would also cease, that would also, I mean, we would no longer get funding.
Right, exactly.
So there's a little bit of, uh, if institutional model disappears, and the source of funding for the video on demand also disappears.
Right, right. No, I know. Yeah. Right.
We'll have to figure that out going forward, but that's why we have a capital plan, and we're trying to pre- prepare for every.
Totally.
The only wish we could compete with those, Jim.
I know.
Get the green screen really close.
So when would you, uh, want, think you may wanna be coming back to go over your capital plan?
We don't have a timeline for that right now, we unfortunately are, um, kinda at a revenue freeze right now, the state of Massachusetts, uh, Don, um, it, this, uh, described to us that the state of Massachusetts changed how organizations like us get passed through funding. So right now, we're not getting any new revenue, so we're, it's being held. Um, so we're gonna have to come to the town in, uh, for the town meeting next summer and ask for a, what is it called, a, uh?
Enterprise help.
And, yeah, in an enterprise fund, basically.
So.
That's when we can at least have a projection of what money we have coming in, going out.
So that's something we'll do. So that's something we'll do for the spring?
We're getting the money, I mean, it's just being held.
Right.
Alright, so it's money we're gonna have, yeah.
Yes, right.
We are, we are fiscally um, sound and we are able to carry ourselves for that period of time.
Right.
Uh, because of the DOR enterprise account establishment in the Town of Cohasset is a little lagging compared to other towns have done something similar. Um, so we'll, it's all gonna be off, off hand and dandy. And um, as far as our budget, we have a draft, we have not reviewed it as a board or have, you know, discussed it. And so therefore, um, I think as soon as we can come back to you would be probably a month, which means it would probably more likely after the holidays, because, um, so if you would like to shoot for maybe January, I think that, I shouldn't say February.
Good, January.
Yeah.
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 Um, I should probably, you know, say sometime in January, if there's a session, we could, um, determine the calendar, we could, we could do that.
Certainly, yes.
Good.
Yeah.
Good. I think uh, w- the way the media landscape is changing and the coverage and the decline of newspapers and other such things.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Our community as well as others really looks to beef up this, our cable and local news function, so it's really good news that you're getting additional funding there, but as to the board, I think this is something we need to look to make sure we s- support more, you know, even more attention, um, you know, as we go forward, 'cause there's gonna, there's a, there's a lack of
Yep.
community.
Right.
And, and with these media declines, we lose the sense of community, you know, and so I think you all see what I mean, so that's why I was interested in when you come back with the capital budget, and in fact, when you do, from my own point of view, try to be thinking about what I just said, because that's, we, we, we're gonna be looking for more and more as a town, as a community, for this to become a more, yeah, cable TV to become an even more important institution than it has been, so we see you as an important part of the future. Uh, from me, my view.
Yeah, we, we sh- we share those goals, you know, we want this to be a, a, a mouthpiece for the town.
Yeah, no. Glad to see you people serving on this too, it's, it's appreciated in this function.
Yeah.
Correct.
Um, I would like to ask if Carrie could come out to one of our meetings, uh, maybe and help.
Yes, I would love to.
Before we do our broadcast presentation, because I think that it would, um, be good to sort of, um, get us some ideas and, you know, I think that
Yeah.
as a sponsor to the Cable Advisory Committee.
I'll email you after the meeting.
Okay.
We'll schedule it.
Alright, great.
That sounds good. And, okay, anything else on this?
No, great work.
Anything, anything from the public, 'cause this is a public hearing, on this? Uh, if there's not, then I'll entertain a motion relative to this. Wait, listen, do you excuse us while we get our motion?
Got it?
No, no, just this part.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
That's just the summary of the contract.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody couldn't, look at this for a minute before you do, or we don't need to?
Yeah.
Basically, I would call, describe, you know, the highlights are the, really, the revenue increases.
Yeah.
And the HD channel, which we'll have eventual access to. I'm not looking forward to being on HD.
Oh, hi-def.
Thank you.
We don't look great in low-def, so.
That's, that's the point, nice point, Corey.
It's all about the cameras and the gels, right?
Yeah, yeah.
No, I have.
Alright, excuse me, is there a member of the audience?
Um, does this have to do with all of Verizon, or is it Verizon, uh, with the TV?
Is Ginger?
Yes.
Okay, I had an email. Uh, this is a question that Ginger has relative to, um, TV, could, do we want, can we do this motion now? And then, I would like to entertain her question while, while, yeah. So we're gonna do this motion on this contract, and then Ginger, I'm gonna call on you for, for your question, it's about coverage so, in, in a certain area of the town, so, um, we'll do it that way, so it's to the motion?
I hereby move that the Board of Selectmen, as Cable Television License Issuing Authority, vote as follows. To grant the subject cable television renewal license with an effective date of November thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, to Verizon New England Inc. All terms and conditions contained in this renewal license have been agreed to by Verizon by and through its authorized representative, and Verizon has agreed to and shall execute this renewal license agreement as set out on the signature page of the renewal license.
Could that's the motion?
Second.
Is there a second to that motion?
I will, I, well, I, I ha- I have to second that, you made that up on the spot.
So, motion made and seconded, uh, any discussion, Mr. Wood? No discussion, all those in favor, say, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did I see something?
I was just gonna ask if the, uh, contract, if the motion would have the five years included, you mentioned?
That's what, that's what the actual contract says. So, and by the way, so I have three copies of it to sign, you can do it now or do it after the meeting. Oh, you have.
Those are the, those ones that need to be signed, right?
Oh, those are, you have.
Okay, one thing at a time, so, we, we've, uh, we've answered your question, correct? Thank you for asking it, with that done, then the motion's been made, it's been seconded, all those in favors, any discussion further? Did we vote on this, uh, all those say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, that's unanimous Tracy, you can now sign.
I will sign it before we go.
Right.
And I, I just wanna clarify for the audience here, this contract is for, um, our, um, funding from Verizon, the cable provider, uh, for our public access station, and it's only based off of our, um, revenue from cable, not internet. Internet is separate, and no one ever.
And that's in the con- that's in the contract, right?
Yeah, that's in the contract, so I just think that, um, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah. Okay, with that done, uh, I don't know if this question relates you folks now, but I'm gonna record, if you'd identify yourself, please, and
Um, yes, uh.
Ask a good question.
Virginia Jensen, um, five forty-two, Jerusalem Road. Uh, it was wonderful to hear all of, everyone, uh, and all the new hires and very positive representation of Cohasset, and also glad to hear that the ocean area is, um, maybe free of the tax increase this year, because I didn't speak about that. Um, I, there's a, I have a concern, um, or a question, I don't exactly know, uh, what we, if there's anything to do about it, but I saw that Verizon was being addressed, so, um, this is a Verizon issue. Uh, the Black Rock Beach area, um, does not have, um, cell coverage, and
Oh.
that's of very much concern to me, I had a woman walk to my house and say that, um, she couldn't call her husband, didn't pick her up, and it was dark out. That was the least of, I guess, my concerns, because if there were an accident, there were a problem, um, with the swimmers, uh, I, I, I think you would need some sort of cell coverage there, and the whole area is very spotty. Um, and, uh, so I'm, I'm, I guess, I, I, since the spotty coverage is throughout Cohasset and a little bit throughout the South Shore, whereas when you sail in the town, in this, uh, state of Maine, you can get coverage all the way up the coast, I'm wondering if there's anything possibly that can be done about it to, um, you know, to discuss with Verizon, particularly at the beach area, that's my main answer.
Okay, you done with your question?
I'm all done.
No, thank you for asking it, uh, can any of our hand up first?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say that we have discussed putting this on an agenda, just general cell coverage, um, I have AT&T cell coverage, and I cannot get a cell call, uh, at my house either, so, w- when we've been talking a lot about uh, the power outages with National Grid, it's exacerbated for people in certain sections of the town because they're unable to, you know, get any information, because they can't make phone calls. So, it's definitely something that has been on our, um, uh, at least queued up for a, a real conversation soon. Um, and we've talked about it probably three or four times since September, especially with, you know, now we're getting into storm season, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, Kristen, Carrie, oh, you, you, you're Carrie, sorry.
Uh, just to echo those thoughts, thank you so much for sharing this, I'm on the other end of Jerusalem and also really struggle with coverage, and I've been wondering about that for a long time, and I'm a millennial and don't even have a landline, so, there are, for real.
So this is a real crisis.
There is.
And landlines don't work.
Exactly, so that's, it's, we really need to address this as a town, I'm shocked at how bad the service still is, and it seems like it's not just one carrier. So it does seem like AT&T and Verizon are equally bad, and I assume the others are as well, so we need to, we need to
It's actually the town.
to discuss this, I really appreciate you coming here and sharing that with us, because it is a big problem.
Well, thank you, I do appreciate that you responded to it, and that, um, the landlines, uh, I have a landline, but it doesn't work or lose the power
Or the electricity, yeah.
if there's a possibility of, um, possibly giving, giving us back the copper line, or, or the old landlines that did work without power.
Right.
I mean, that's one, one option, but I, I welcome the discussion.
And, and I think. And I think it's particularly of, of concern down at Black Rock Beach, because when you mentioned swimming, that's a pretty, it's, it's a great beach, but it's kinda hazardous, 'cause it's so steep. You could easily have somebody get in some serious trouble there, where you really do need medical attention quickly. And thank you very much for making your home available, we'll put a little sign up there for you. But I think it's a.
It's all because of electricity.
With electricity.
Uh, Chris?
Um, I, I just want, uh, to, you and, and everyone else know that we've been having ongoing conversations with both AT&T and Verizon in particular, uh, piggybacked on, A, that they use town facilities already.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and B, that, um, they're both looking to enter the public safety world at a higher level. And if they're gonna do that, we want them to, to ante up, and we've had some, I know that public safety folks have had some extensive conversations with both, and they both claim that they're gonna find ways of expanding service down there. Uh, and I know that there's efforts underway to find locations for, uh, some kind of a tower, now, nobody really wants one of those in their backyard, that said, if there isn't a place to put something, there needs to be some, a way to boost the signals down there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in terms of copper lines, by the way, they're getting out of the copper business entirely, so I wouldn't expect Verizon, and they're talking about getting out of the fiber business, which is the reason I've only renewed this contract for five years. Whether or not they actually go to a fiveG service with those, those repeaters on telephone calls, although I don't know, I don't know if they want to. So, i- i- and I, by the way, I lost a call the other day, I was driving right in that area, and I dropped a call, uh, so I, I do know the, the problem as well, firsthand, as, as a firsthand friend. I know that our public safety folks are working closely with Verizon and, and AT&T to hold their feet to the fire, to say, we gotta get something done, uh, particularly during storms, I mean, even apart from storms, but, uh, if there's no power and your landlines aren't working, 'cause they're all powered now, there has to be an, an, an access for a cell, for cell. So, we will pick this up again, we've been having these conversations with them, being on the coast, a rocky coast is a beautiful coast, and also means it's a lot of elevation changes, which makes it a.
Okay, so, we're having, I wanna, what, what we're gonna do, I know we're having, you know, ongoing conversations, so we expect some improvement in there. As a board, do we wanna, more or less leave it that we're gonna have this on the agenda in January, February type thing, or do, or what do you wanna do? I just wanna make sure we follow up on this, so.
Come on, track, we can.
Or should we just wait till you come back to us from these conversations?
Was it planned to come back after the holidays and see where we are, 'cause we've been having conversations with them, and they've said they're gonna do stuff.
So why don't you, if you could make a note, then, after the holidays, give us an update, and maybe we could put it on the agenda, and
Yeah.
Because, uh, communication, especially in this day and age with the weather and so forth, um, we should be paying attention to them.
Yeah.
So, okay, yeah.
Can I just, uh, exclamation point that, I mean, if there's any way to even have that discussion during one of our December meetings, because and one of the things we're really trying to, what I would like to see the town commit to is some kind of a, um, you know, a, a, a response, what happens when we have that first snowstorm and the lights go down?
Yeah.
And, and that could be, I mean, with the climate change, it's more later in the season, I do appreciate that, but the sooner we can get this conversation fleshed out, the better. And just to share a little joke, I've been on the phone with Chris, driving along Jerusalem Road, going home, and we'll start to lose each other, and we'll both say to each other, you know, don't you know anybody in this town that, that has any influence? So I, I, we completely feel your pain, um, and we gotta deal with it sooner rather than later.
Okay.
Definitely after the holidays, or before, we can get something more concrete.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, let's, let's not bring it up until we have something
Exactly.
to really do something about this. Ginger, thank you, I, not only for yourself, but I think you've probably helped a lot of other people in town by coming forward and bringing this problem forward, including several members of the board, apparently, so, uh, but thank you for coming forward on this.
I appreciate the opportunity.
Alright, uh, that concludes the hearing, in question period, the next, uh, item on the agenda are license renewals. And, uh, the first one up is the Cohasset triathlon, seems like it was just yesterday.
Yeah.
You again?
Hi there.
You again.
Hello, 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 hello. Yeah, you know, it's, it's interesting, so I was, when I was driving over here, I was thinking about, this is our thirteenth year.
Wow.
Right, it's really something, and I was, as I was driving over here, I'm thinking, we, as a town, I just wanted to share with you all, have done such a great job with events in general, like the whole, it's, I'm coming to you, it's all, it's all buttoned up. We've met with, uh, Chief Quigley and Chief Sylvia, we've met with the Sandy Beach Board, we've talked the music circus, everything's, it's all ready to go. And I remember years ago, it was kind of a little bit of a, it wasn't really like that, so I think that's, we've really come far for, not only the triathlon, but I think other events as well. Um, also coming to you, just feeling really quite humble with the whole experience, I mean, five hundred, I'm guessing five hundred residents do this event, and it's a great event for the town, and we are, we don't take it for granted. I know for myself personally, or even, even the athletes, it's really something that we're lucky to have this opportunity to raise in this amazing town that we live in, so. That being said, I am coming to you with a, with your approval for June the twenty-eighth, it's a Sunday, it's always that fourth Sunday in June, uh, to, uh, have the triathlon. There really are zero changes to the plan, it's like we've always done before. We met last week with the, the department heads, and they're all on board, so. What we did last year, so you remember, is you all approved the date, you said, okay, Bill, you are good to go for June twenty-eighth. And then you had me come back, say, April or May, which is great, I think we should do that again, 'cause it's good public, uh, it, just, it's good that you get, come back here and share with what the plan is, so if I'm asking for your vote tonight for the date, and then you can, and then I'll get all the paperwork done, insurance done, and then we'll come back in May, or whatever you want me to, and then give you the final, the, the, uh, final tale.
So, I think that worked well last year.
Yeah.
Which we should do that, and, um, and going over the plan in more detail later on is helpful to everybody. So, a couple of things on your presentation, one, as I was at one of your strategic meetings, one, here a few years ago, if you remember, where you, where you planned out this program with multiple departments and so forth. One of the advantages, uh, the community gets in doing this is the various departments, police, DPW, fire, and community people and citizens work out in a coordinated way, an event, and it just creates, you know, better communication and coordination of departments in the town working together, so that's one of the benefits the town gets out of this.
Hmm.
And it is a logistical, working together thing, which is excellent.
Mm-hmm.
And then the other thing is that, I do wanna say, and, 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 and congratulate you, as an entrepreneur, you've essentially created this event, where there was nothing before.
Yeah.
And, um, and as an entrepreneur in our, in our community, which gives us extra pride, but to s- see us be able to work and develop those kinds of activities and so forth, are, are success stories for our entrepreneurial people in an economy like we have today nowadays, is something, you know, I'm, I'm itself applaud, and I think it's, uh, really good for this community to have that, and I just wanna, I, I just wanna, uh, highlight that, uh, as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, are there any comments, questions from the board?
I think it's great.
Yeah, it's great, great.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Diane.
We're gonna draw straws as we guess to make the ma- make the motion.
Who's gonna do it? No.
Okay, so, who would like to make the motion?
I'll do it, I'll make the motion that we approve the date of June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, for the Cohasset triathlon, second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Wonderful, thank you.
No, we're, we're not done, we're not done.
Aye.
Oh.
All those opposed? Uh, Tracy, the vote is unanimous.
Okay, alright, 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 thank you very much, thank you, thank you.
It's always Chris, I'm done.
Uh, thank you, we, we look forward to, you see me in a few months, yeah.
And, and thank you guys. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on is the holiday stroll, twelve, seven, nineteen, and the representative for that?
Yeah. See ya. See ya. Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, how you doing?
How are you?
Good. And welcome, Larry?
Thank you.
You can identify yourself, though, and. You can identify yourself, though.
Larry Corthell, Cohasset Chamber.
Welcome. So you can go ahead, if you would, and express what it is that you have planned roughly, and then I think, uh, ma- in a major fashion, what you need from us again is the approval of this date.
So, we've got. Yeah.
And anything you can tell us about the logistics of it and so forth?
Yeah, so, Holiday Stroll, um, December seventh, five to eight P M. So we're gonna do a little thing, a couple, more more events, actually, we're gonna have a, about six hundred luminary bags on the common around the fountain. And then I got thinking, we got talking about how to weigh them down, so we decided to do a can drive with Saint Anthony's. So the can will go in the bag to weigh it down and the electric candle on top, so.
This'll be electric, because I know that. Oh, we're gonna say, the fire chief usually has a comment in there, if one in our annual presentation.
We already, we've worked out.
Because soup labels are flammable.
Well, electric candle, um, I tested them out at Halloween and the monsoon and they worked, so. Then we've got, um, we've got a little change in, uh, the roadblock, we're gonna be roadblocking up at, um, Main and Spring. So Saint Anthony's has offered their lot, so people can park in the Saint Anthony's lot and walk down.
Oh, good.
Which will alleviate a lot of the pressure in the merchant lot. We're gonna get the merchants that Saturday to all park at Saint Anthony's in the morning, which will create more space in the main lot.
Great. Great idea.
It keeps Red Lion, um, uh, Fia, it keeps, um, Tiffany Nails, and it kee- keeps, um, the general store in the event, not outside of the event.
Good.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's all good.
Very good idea.
Good, good.
Um, five singing groups and a couple of, um, street performers.
They were great this summer.
And, yeah, so it's.
Is the same ones?
Yeah, no, different, um, this is gonna be really interesting, what we have going on, so.
Mm.
All the merchants have different events going on in their shops, so we should be able to hopefully get between four and five thousand people down.
That's fabulous, uh, Carrie.
That's the plan.
Just, what is, what are the times of the event, again?
Five to eight.
Five to eight, right.
And then we're really pushing also the, um, Church Craft Fair that morning, because it's on the same day.
Mm-hmm.
So we're trying to promote it as you have to go to boat, like Fourth of July parade fireworks.
So, yeah.
Right, Jake, get out of, go home, take a quick nap, and come back.
Yeah, yeah, because, because we're gonna be in this boat next year, because we traditionally did stroll on the second Saturday.
Mm-hmm.
But this year it's the fourteenth, and I think the thirtieth was too early, so we're on the seventh, and next year we're on the same, the same thing, three weeks before Christmas.
Mm-hmm.
So we're gonna be probably, I think, on the fifth next year.
Good.
So, all good.
Do we have, uh, okay, uh, any other, Diane?
The, the only question I have is is whether, um, there needs to be an entertainment permit too, uh, which I think there would be for any kind of outdoor music, so. Because this event, I, unless.
It's just carolers.
Okay. Um. I.
I don't, you know, it's a good question, uh.
I know when we we established the guidelines, there was usually that secondary step, I would, I would feel comfortable, the board felt comfortable, just voting an entertainment license? And then we can, um, if it's needed, I mean.
We could vote that the town managers empowered to grant an entertainment license if it's appropriate, or we could just.
Why don't you just approve, if you're, what is it, it's roving bands of singers?
Yeah, I mean, there's no stage.
No, 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 I meant, I meant, excuse me, but we usually have that on a Saturday night anyway, so.
Right, yeah.
So we do have to diff, we do have to differentiate the usual from the usual.
Victorian dress.
Right, 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 right.
I, you don't try to, you're sure you get it.
We may have the police chief here coming.
Carolers.
Carolers.
Um, so, uh, so you could just approve, uh, seasonal carolers.
Right.
Well, we approve the event and and in the motion, we could say any appropriate musical activities that are usual for this event.
Yeah, that's right.
Is that correct, do you remember that?
That sounds great, I I just.
Oh, covered it. All right, anything else?
Yeah, I'd like to move that we approve the Holiday Stroll on, uh, December seventh, uh, twenty nineteen, to also include approval of any accessory musical entertainment.
As is usual for this event.
As is usual for this event.
Okay, motion made, second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, that's unanimous, Tracy, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
Oh, was there one?
Okay. The next, uh, item on the agenda is the two hundred and fiftieth kickoff, uh, kickoff event on one, one, twenty. And if you'd come up and identify yourselves and and discuss that event, please.
I'm Paul Carlson, eighty-two Broadway Farm.
Welcome, Paul.
Um.
And you, sir?
I'm Glenn Pratt, King Street.
This is for the east coast audience. Welcome, Glenn.
So we're seeking a permit for our opening day event on January one, that'd be, is the first permit of probably quite a few others we'll be seeking from you over time. The plan is to have, um, the event start at one o'clock on Jan-, one o'clock P M on January twentieth. Um, church bells, we ring, a flag ceremony, we'll have two large tents that we want to put on the, um, on the co- on the, on the common, but if it's snowing, we'd like to put them on Long Road. The tents would be adjacent to Long Road, if if it's not snowy, if it's, if they can't be put on the ground, then we'd like to have them put on Long Road. Um, the, uh, um, there'll be some speeches, the, uh, segment will be invited, chairman can give a speech if he wishes. Uh, Ron Goodwin will be.
What can I now?
He can start practicing.
I am. In a barrel.
Rod Goodwin will be lasering, um, two fifty emblems on shirts, jackets for the public. There'll be refreshments in one tent, there'll be things like hot chocolate, cider, donuts, other pastries and so forth. I don't think we're planning on any cooked food, except for the hot chocolate. Um, there'll be music by, uh, music in one tent with, uh, um, music by Jim Armstrong. We're planning ice skating on the pond with figure skaters and then open to the public.
Wow.
If it's night, cold enough for ice, but has a plan for that. Um, there will be an ice cream contest to choose the flavor for the year for the two fifty celebration, so it has its own flavor for two fifty. Um, there's, uh, planning to have the meeting house open with the Hobbs family and the historical society to give the history of the first town hall. And there's six homes around the common that were there back in seventeen seventy.
Wow.
And they will be recognized as as part of the ser- as part of the ceremony. So we're seeking an event application, since it'll be music, I guess we also need a music application, uh, music application and.
And a license.
Music license.
Yes, yeah, yes.
And, um, we're no- we're not planning any alcohol, um, so that's what we're planning.
So this, it sounds really like a fairly elaborate and appropriate kickoff, has this been coordinated with our various other departments, the police?
Yeah, fire, DPW, the other police have all been involved.
Fire and the usual, this has been under the usual planning mechanism that we have, right?
Yes.
Because, uh, that's good, good.
This is New Year's Day, right?
New Year's Day.
Day is, huh?
In the afternoon.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I appreciate that time, yes. It's a good time.
Millennial.
One o'clock.
One o'clock would be, one, uh, any other commentary on this presentation, any questions, anything from the departments that are here or anything? Sounds like this is gonna be a really excellent kickoff to the two hundred and fiftieth year, and I, I know you folks are doing a lot of planning, this is much appreciated, so.
Yeah.
Uh, Diane?
Yeah, I just, I I just wanna reiterate the entertainment license again, because I don't wanna get out of the habit of doing a license that we're supposed to do and that we require from. You know, whether they're doing the arts festival or, um, you know, when we do the fall fest or whatever, this, so I, I just think that we can, I'm very comfortable knowing the plans, knowing the entities, this is the town, it's an application. We would, we wouldn't be charging an entertainment fee, so I'm comfortable covering that in the motion. But I definitely wanna make sure that, you know, in the future, we have the entertainment license application, um, in the application packet for these kind of events, for everybody.
Okay, so if that's the case, as he's come in, just as appropriate, you know, make sure the, yeah, the event is appropriate, fill out an application for entertainment, and I, and on this one here, I believe we can do it orally like we did the last one, is that appropriate? Uh, okay, any other comments or questions, this sounds really like a lot of fun and a good way to start off a new year, so.
Yeah.
And I think they've done a natural job.
We're on brand, I just think, can we get, yeah, can we get two fifty of Patagonia's, give us more.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah. Good, uh, motion, please, on this?
I'll make the motion to approve the, um, two hundred and fiftieth kickoff opening event on January first, twenty twenty, from approximately noon to five P M. And also to issue an entertainment license for the planned, um, musical entertainment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, Tracy, that's unanimous, thank you again, and we'll really look forward to it, John.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's almost here. Pretty amazing.
Can't wait.
How that happened.
Okay, we actually did this agenda knowing that you wouldn't, so you wouldn't have to move.
Oh, Glenn, I'm a.
Jackie's coming up.
But it should, you know, go into the next seat, okay? All right, the next item on the agenda is the Beechwood Cemetery, uh, Boston Tea Party Museum proposal, uh, if you'd introduce yourselves and you can then make the proposal, please.
Glenn Pratt, King Street.
Welcome, Glenn.
Jackie, do you want to turn it in?
Welcome, Jackie.
So, I'll, I'll tell you in general what what's trying to be done, and Jackie can give you the background of why it's happening. So, um, the Boston Tea Party Museum in Boston, um, wants to, uh, recognize the burial places of everyone that's known, who took place, uh, took part in the Boston Tea Party. And, uh, turns out there were four people from Cohasset, three of them are buried here, so I think Jackie can take the background story from there.
Okay, a couple of weeks ago, there was a very nice ceremony at Central Cemetery for two of the Boston Tea Party participants from Cohasset. The third one is buried in Beechwood Cemetery, and as that is a, uh, town cemetery, we need your permission to have the Boston Tea Party ships and museum. Come there and place a, a very nice marker at the grave of Jared Joy, who was the, um, young man who dressed as a bohawk and took part in dumping tea in the Boston Harbor.
Is there a picture of him?
That's so cool.
Yeah, it is, it's a very, it's a nice ceremony, uh, they have reenactors playing part of the, the person, probably Jared Joy.
Love that.
And a couple of nice speeches and so forth.
It's a simple ceremony, but, uh, effective, and the reason they're doing it is that the participants in the Boston Tea Party back in seventeen seventy-three were sworn to secrecy.
They were never supposed to reveal if they had participated, so now it's okay to tell.
Wow.
It's okay. That's good.
Statute of limitations on, on the revolution.
Yeah.
And so this, uh, museum wants to, um, acknowledge their role, so we hope that you will approve.
It's a little war.
So, from a historical point of view, since we have you, I'm kinda curious, there's, these are four individuals, three of which we know.
Well, there's, there were three from Cohasset.
So the three, the other one.
Yeah.
So, has their story long been known, or was this just, how did we find out about it?
Well, no, it, well, it's in Bigelow's history in Cohasset.
It is, all three of these are in Bigelow's history?
Yeah, it, yeah, this, he talks about Cohasset's role in the American Revolution, and he does mention, in fact, most of probably know about.
Right. He outed these people there, yeah.
These three young men is is from his history. So.
That's really good, and, um, the ceremony that was held in the main cemetery was pretty fairly elaborate, I think there was pictures of it in the paper, media.
Yeah, it, they had.
So they come in costumes and so, so.
They had wonderful publicity, they really did.
So, actually, it'd be nice if you could give us some kind of publicity, we could put up on the website as well as our social media pages, because we could, you know, promote this if you wanna, it seems like.
Yeah.
Well, we don't know when they're coming back.
So they tell you or tell us?
Well, they have a lot of places they're trying to schedule, they have a, um, um, live reenactment on December sixteenth, so they may not be able to get back before that. So it may be, it's it's far out this spring, I'm not sure, but but, um, now that we're able to tell them we can proceed, we'll get much more information, I think.
Spring, yeah, mm-hmm. Right. Mm-hmm. Yes. That's good. Okay, any further commentary?
I, I just wanna note, I I did send a forward to Chris and to Joy Schiffman and to Glenn today, somebody, um, a, a, a friend of mine who used to live in Cohasset. Um, sent me the Palmeroy Foundation, have you heard of that, Jackie? Um, I'll pass it along to you as well, they're apparently a historical foundation that provides historical markers for certain commemorative, um, um, whatever, um, occasions. Um, and they provide them for free, it sounds similar to this, but I don't know what their scope is, and, um, they have been doing so for some of the towns on the south shore that are also celebrating milestones. And Paul just celebrated like three hundred or, anyway, there's a, a lot of that going on, and and she wanted me to make, um, some of the leaders in the Cohasset two fifty aware of it, so. Forwarded along to you, but it's in everybody else's, Glenn, Joy's and Chris's inbox, yeah, thank you.
Good, anything else? Any other commentary on this? Okay, and then the motion you need, then, is this to, essentially to grant? The proposal for the laying of a proper ceremony, ceremony, uh, at Beechwood, anyone wanna make that motion?
After.
To have a replacement.
I'll, I'll, yeah, I, I just, um, moved that we approve the the placement of the Boston Tea Party Museum, um, proposed, um.
Go ahead, Diane, Diane.
Marker.
Marker, thank you, at the Beechwood Cemetery.
Oh, for Mr. Joy, is that the name?
Jared Joy.
Jer- for Jared, Jared Joy.
For Jared Joy.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion, all those in favor, say aye, aye, opposed, nay, that's unanimous, thank you for this work, thank you for doing this, it's great, uh, it'd be great to honor our tradition.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're considering suggesting maybe they could have the ceremony on marathon weekend?
Uh, we, we, the actual talk, uh, yeah.
Might be inappropriate, and the weather's nicer.
Right.
Okay, um, this is, we're just about right on time.
I was just gonna say, you're spot on, Kevin, exactly.
We're, we're here, we are. We're just on time. Will you take a picture of the clock?
I know.
Okay, so this is eight oh five, and eight oh five on the agenda is the harbor plan, uh, update and process, so. Is this what, Chris, I'll go ahead and go ahead.
John, go ahead.
You can go.
Uh, so there was a, um, I think a very well attended and well, um, engaged forum last night, uh, chapter ninety-one and the, um, harbor plan. Um, and the, um, conversation continues. I think, um, one of the things that have come out of this is there's a much smaller, much easier to grasp.
Focus.
Focus, that's a good, that's a much better word, uh, chapter ninety-one tweaked that would just match our local zoning. That's heading for state review to make sure it's gonna be, gonna pass, uh, at at which point it would come back. Um, the harbor committee would then be asked to give its final, I mean, you could, well, certainly talk about the plan between now and then, but, uh, the harbor committee's gonna need to do a, a final vote and recommend to the board of selectmen. Um, the har- the planning, uh, board should, at that, it concurrently, you know, make any, you know, give a green light if they're comfortable with that proposed change and make sure it matches local zoning, uh, because they're the ones who propose local zoning change in the first place.
Well, so actually, we were gonna have the harbor, just to make sure it's, because we had, once it goes back to the harbor committee, the harbor committee will review it, deliberate vote, at which point, the harbor committee, the chair will come and present that to us. And then, and then at that point, once we look at, we will then send it to planning and ask for their deliberation, because we will, we need to look at it to make sure it's okay with us. We have, we have to be careful not to take a vote apparently at that point, and then we'll send it to the planning, uh, board for that. At the same time, we're going to send, you mind me interje- I want to make sure I have this right.
No, 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 yeah.
At the same time, we're gonna send this to our town council, because it has regulatory and other language in it for their vetting and review. And we've commissioned the town council to do that, and provide us with a brief cogent analysis of what is in that plan. And then, uh, the third thing we're gonna do, and I think we can do that at the same time, is is we need to have another public forum. So we'll have a public forum similar to what we had the, uh, last night only, it'll be, the board of selectmen will be essentially presenting this plan that we sort of feel relatively comfortable, you know, absent the input we're gonna get. Uh, and we'll present that to the public, and we're gonna listen to any input that the public has on that, okay? So with that done, and with the report in hand, with the vote and 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 rec- uh, recommendation presumably of the planning board. We will then, at probably our next meeting, I would say, uh, go ahead and deliberate and vote and be able to move this along.
That's, it's some assumption.
And the relatively good news on this is, is that there has been iterations in time, and I know there's been a lot of actually, if not confusion and so forth, relative to this time in ninety-one, but I wanna, because that seemed to have been what sort of delayed this over a period of time. But the good news that we had last night was, is that if, whatever we were discussing on the ninety-one has got more and more focus, so that I think it's gonna make everybody's, all these steps easier to go through, would be my impression, so. Um, and, uh, last night's discussion was, uh, good, robust at some times, but that's exactly what, uh, public dis- public discussions are for, and I rather enjoyed the whole thing, and I think we, everybody got a lot out of it, so. And that'll be, I mean, made available online for anybody to view as well, so. Do I, and I wanna make sure that I had that that process out, so, yeah, it's clear to everybody, mm-hmm, yeah.
And, and based on the, I'm sorry, based on the timelines, um, this would probably go back, come back to the town sometime in December, at the harbor committee for late December or early January. Um, and then come back to you at that point, and then you make a recommendation sometime in Janu- uh, providing the.
Do our deliberation, then we'll go right, you know, we'll lay it right out and move right along on, this would be my feelings, what I, the one.
It'll be helpful if we could, you know, if timing works, to get this before you jump deep into into town menu planning, because that's gonna consume a fair amount of time.
Yeah, I think we wanna, I think we wanna move along on it.
January is like.
But I, I, we probably should think about scheduling a separate standalone date, maybe just for this, sometime in January, well, depending on how the, the, the process goes.
Okay, Diane?
Just a couple of questions, uh, just for clarity, like, what's happening today with the harbor plan? So, is it, is the next step, the submission of the chapter ninety-one?
Okay, so let me try to, let me try to answer that, because only in that, we have to manage this, and I wanna make sure the board is.
Issues to CCM?
So what's going on now is, is the trimmed-down version we received last night, but not in the final legal language of what that report will look like. That has to be put into a reportable, the report form. So right now, there exists a September harbor plan. So what Emily and Harrison and, uh, is gonna be doing is writing now essentially a November plan. So they're changing, they're making the changes that we discussed or saw last night, and then that, once they're done with that, that's gonna go to the state. And, um, and for their review and comment, we wanna get that because we don't wanna end up sending a final thing to the state and have it rejected. Because if that occurs, then that closes the process in some way, and it would take us another year to get all that. So it's being done in that sort of sidestep way. And Emily reported to us last night that that'll be done in the next few days.
And that, and then that will be what goes to the harbor committee for approval, and then through these other committees.
Specifically, answer your question. As long as the state says, as long as the state recognizes, says okay, yeah.
It's okay, right, right. And then just, um, because unfortunately I wasn't able to make meeting, the meeting last night, is, is it, am I able to view it or see, you know, see the video of it or get any of the materials, just so I understand what changes have.
Okay. So.
I mean, I went to the planning board last week, but I don't understand where some of these issues are at, and I wanna just.
No, that's good, it is, this is what we're doing. Yeah, right, so I believe that's gonna be, uh, that was broadcast last night by cable one four three, and they're gonna be putting it up on the screen.
Yeah, fill in the blanks.
And if they provide it to us, we can even put that out on website and media too, social media.
Yeah, link or something would be great.
You'll be able to see that in one four three, and I think you being, you actually could probably call him, and, and Don Owing will send you your own copy.
Make him, yeah, a video.
You should view it, because it'll catch you up.
Yeah, 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 absolutely.
There's also a powerpoint, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, there's also a powerpoint.
Excuse me?
Right.
Yeah.
Can that be distributed?
Yeah, yeah, well, anyone who was there last night, I think it's like, I got copies.
I have, yeah, I'm sure. Okay, great, thank you.
Well, all the documents that have been gone into this, the documents that were sent to the state originally are all public records, and they're subject to public review. So, um, you know, I, for one, would like to see what was originally submitted, I'd like to see what is presently submitted. I understand that, um, the consultant has made changes, and, um, we haven't seen them. And it's, you know, they're public records and public documents, and I really would like to have them disclosed to the public. So we know what's going on behind the curtain, cause it's been very difficult to understand what's going on, where the information came from. And in fact, what even has been going on. And the harbor committee has not voted on any of these things, or to my knowledge, I've been to almost every thing. They didn't vote to specifically send a certain document to the state. So there's a lot of opacity, and I'd like to see some transparency, and I'd like to see the public documents released, so we can see what you've been doing, and I'm sure that can be easily done.
Okay, so how, how would that request be effectuated, Chris? Uh, can you, if you, uh, can you put out maybe an email specifically what you want? And then send it to Chris, uh, and then Chris will respond to that?
So, as, as I said, let's see if I can get some clarity now, so just, just speed the process. Emily did mention last night that there was another tweak, I think there was a, you might have, like double X number, right? Um, and, and she was consulting with, I guess, the planning department to figure out, you know, what the number was looking like based on, um, the zoning conversations that were taking place. That has to be finalized, uh, once that's finalized, that has to be, that should be circulated, cause that was, I think, the last piece that was uncertain, right? Um, and I'll make sure that I could circulate it. I don't think the other, the rest of the document is different. Uh, the September draft of the rest of the document, I think, is, is, is the same, but I will double check on that.
I think probably, the safest thing for us as a board and the community is, essentially, those changes can be made, and can be put into what, we'll call the November document.
Call the November document, yeah.
Why don't we just deal with that in its entirety and make everybody's life easier?
Yep.
So once that November document has been produced, as it's going to the state, why don't actually that be sent to every member of the board of selectmen?
Yep. That's right.
And then we all have that.
And we'll post it up on the website.
Yeah, and everybody then will see exactly what the state is looking at.
Right.
And that would be a good way to do it.
Yep.
And, and it would be.
So that take care of that.
It would be helpful to understand that what was the original submission, so we can see the process. It's easier to understand where we are if we understand the process, because it really has, I think most people in town don't really understand what's been going on down there. The significance of Chapter ninety-one regulations and changes. And it is, you know, pretty difficult, but I think the, well, first of all, they're all public records, so we all have the right to see them anyway. I'm just requesting that.
So if you wanna make a request, now let me just see, right, to make it best on Chris, make it specific as possible, and then Chris can check it off and give everybody.
I think a lot of this, Jack, is already, I think the different versions are already on the website, but I will double check with, uh, with Emily and.
Whatever it is, when you get, to make it easy, just to check off what it is, and generally, on these kinds of disclosures, I believe you either send him the documents or refer to him where he can get it.
Yes, yeah, right.
That's what.
And I, I think you're, you're even looking to see, it sounds like if there's some kind of a, a way to show the evolution, you're saying, of, of the conversation.
Thinking, yeah.
Yeah, um, I don't know if anything exists per se, except for some red light versions. Let me see if somebody can't be generated, um, if it doesn't already exist. Uh, and if it happens, if it already exists.
It's very simple to do what Emily submitted originally to the state for approvals. That's a document.
Then just ask for that in specific, cause that'll make it easier for him to, and then you'll get your reply, okay? All right?
Yeah.
All right, any others? And I see the chair, would you like to mention something, Tim?
I would.
Identify yourself, please.
Yeah, sure, Tim Davis, I, uh, Chair of the harbor committee. Uh, first of all, I assume that the comment about opacity does not apply to the harbor committee, cause certainly we've done everything we possibly can to be as transparent as possible. Complying with open meeting laws, and if there's any issue, please address it to the Chair of the harbor committee. The other thing is, I would like to request, and thank you for, uh, uh, reiterating the process. During this process, if town council or anyone else comes up with any objection or any concerns about the current addition of the harbor plan, would you please let the harbor committee know that, so we can consider it and discuss it and deliberate on it? We will have as many meetings as necessary between now, and then to make sure that when it comes to us, with the changes, any changes or recommendations from CCM, that we are prepared to address them and pass it on to you.
Okay, so in order to address that, what we could do then is, is modify, and we'll just discuss this as a board. We can, and our council's here, so make sure, Mr. Durance is using, this makes sense to you too, but when, if it comes back, assuming it comes back from CCM, saying, okay, this looks, your November report sounds fine, why doesn't that then trigger Mr. Durance's re, report, which he said previously he could give within a week? And then we will all get that report, and then you can have that report before you do your deliberation. That's a good idea.
Well, that's fine.
That answers your question.
There are a hundred and some odd pages that are not included in what CCM is looking at.
Right.
Those pages will not change. So if, if town council has any concern or finds anything in that, if we could know that ahead of time, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, so are those now existent?
They are existing in the current edition of the plan.
Yeah, so, cause I wanna be specific, okay. So then, when I think if it's okay with the board, then addressing the council and ask the council to go ahead and review all those pages other than the regulatory, and provide any comments or report, as soon as you can, hopefully, within a week, if that's not unreasonable, Paul. Uh, do that in a written report to us all, including, uh, the chair, okay? And then that'll be one report you'll do, and then the second one you'll still do when the, when the CCM comes back. Is that clear to everybody?
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Durance, is that clear to you?
Just one question, I, I understood that there was gonna be this revised final plan. And that's gonna be done in the next few days, that Emily is preparing it. So that's the plan you want me to look at?
Why don't you use that one?
Not to go back on to the website and pull out something off of.
No. No, why don't you do, why, cause I assume that plan will say November, because that's what, when you get the November, the November plan is issued, as soon as you get that, go ahead and do a brief but cogent analysis of everything other than the regulatory stuff. Is that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And is that clear, Paul?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
So, and then if you would, Chris, make sure that when the November plan comes out, you specifically send it to Paul, send a copy to us, so everybody knows, as Jack was saying, so if it's clear to everybody above what was going on. I'm almost thinking, and I'm thinking a lot, which is dangerous, uh, is, is that to have him do everything, if he gets the November plan, have him do everything, including the regulatory, I guess we should wait till CCM makes the comeback.
Right.
So forget that, just do it just as we just discussed, but Chris.
He certainly could review the, the comments that, or the new language that's going to CCM, and he could review them, so he knows what to prepare for.
Yeah, oh, he'll definitely do it himself, but he won't make commentary until he gets it back.
Yeah.
So, Chris, it'll be important that you sort of coordinate this and do it in emails, so it's clear to everybody, make sure the board gets all of us getting, all of that. And Tim is included on all of this correspondence, okay? So, Mr. Durance, there'll be two reports that you're gonna do, one starting fairly quickly, and the other one after we hear that from CCM. Clear to everybody?
Yep.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Nice to see you, sir. Um, okay. Did you have any others on the harbor plan? That's what I wanted to hear. All right, the next item we're gonna discuss is the Cohasset Common Project Update. So whoever is addressing this on that, uh, come forward. I don't, I don't think he met Mr. Louboutin. Nice try. If you come up and identify yourselves and.
I was just thinking about a comment there.
Hello.
Hello, and for these close audience, you can identify yourselves.
Robert Sylvia, Cohasset Fire Chief.
Uh, William Quigley, Police Chief.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you. Um, I guess the very quick update on this is Chief Quigley has done all his due diligence and been doing all the work to, uh, to start making these things happen. The only, so obviously, there were three pieces of this, of this puzzle. One was the change in the traffic flow. The Sunday solution that we've come up with, that the town has come up with, and the third piece is obviously the change in the parking. Um, the change in the parking is obviously gonna be predicated by when we can finally get the lines painted. So that's kind of on a, on a hold at the moment until we get a date, and it's obviously weather dependent.
Okay, interrupt you there?
That piece, go right ahead.
So I'm thinking of the parking that's right along the common, so that's not no parking at this point?
No, no, nothing has changed right now, so, so the signs have been put up.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, right. Right.
So sort of separated these two things, because I don't wanna confuse people. The, the so-called Sunday solution, um, that's been pushed out today, as you've probably seen on social media. We've had some drawings done, and, um, we're gonna socialize that over the next week till Sunday. So this Sunday, uh, this Sunday coming up, we will change to this Sunday parking plan. So from eight thirty AM to twelve thirty PM, North Main Street in the area of the Common will become one-way, self-bound. So from Hingham towards Citu will be one-way on North Main in the area of the Common. There'll be signs put up, DPW is gonna put up signs, there'll be a police officer there, and people worshippers can park on both sides, the odd and the even side of North Main Street. From, from the flagpole all the way down to, to the community center. So there'll be one lane, uh, in between cars, wide lane in between cars, uh, self-bound. That's this Sunday.
Okay.
And are you just on Sunday?
Just on Sunday from eight thirty AM to twelve thirty PM.
And will that be every Sunday? We'll be getting the Sunday, this Sunday?
This is the beginning of the test of.
And everyone, and it'll be every Sunday going forward?
Yes, and unless, you know, we come up with information and data, but, yeah, um, that it's not working.
Okay, good.
The sign, the, the one-way signs on both Jason and Long have been placed, and the do not enter signs on both roads have been placed already. They're, they're up now, they've been bagged.
Yep.
Um, we'll remove those bags, um, you know, probably Saturday, Saturday night. And again, there'll be a police officer, there'll be assist people to explain this. Um, it's been put out in email, uh, the carriage house has been notified. I'm told the churches were notified, yes, uh, and it's gonna go out of that bulletin, I think, Wednesday?
Uh, Wednesdays and Thursdays.
Wednesday's and Thursday's. So we'll see, see how it works, uh, this Sunday.
Good.
Great.
As, as far as the.
Okay. Do you have any, uh, Jack, you wanna ask a question?
Just a question to clarify, when you're coming up Sawyer Street past Dooley's, will you be able to jog around there and then go around the Common that way?
Yeah, you'll be able to take a left off of.
A short left and then a right, okay.
Deep, and then short left, and then you'll be able to enter the, the.
Okay, just wanna clarify.
The loop of, you know, uh, Jason and Long Road, or Beach Street. So you'll be able to loop around that way. So the other part of this, the parking, uh, the Monday through Saturday, um, version of this, when we're gonna restrict parking along the Common. We're not there yet, um, we're at the mercy of the vendors and the weather. Something cold has been raining, it's been, it's been everything. We're, we're trying to get signs, uh, done, so we're a couple of weeks out on that, but I wanted to separate these two things, so as not to confuse people. And just do it, you know, as phase one and, and phase two.
Right.
Good.
We should be there hopefully in two weeks, I think. And one of the things I've been talking with Chris about, Chris is helping me out, is if you look around the, the Common, for whatever reason, they used a lot of stanchions, freestanding poles for the current no parking signs. I think with this new solution, we're gonna try to use the telephone poles to get rid of all those stanchions.
Thank you, good, that's great.
You know, attach the, the signs to the existing poles.
Less the visual noise, and somebody can hear that tone.
Yeah, make it a little bit clearer, so, uh, Brian Joyce is on board, and I think Chris has been helping with that.
Good.
Well, how, how do you anticipate, um, December seventh, which is?
Complete disaster.
Thanks for being honest, Bill.
No, no.
One-way strolling.
One-way strolling, the carolers gonna go one-way.
They're not gonna go around in a circle.
The carolers have to, one-way.
With the moving bands and singers.
Yeah.
They're gonna get out in infamy. Um, it, it should be fine.
Okay.
We've actually, these plans, and we don't give you the actual traffic plan for a reason, we don't give it to the board. I don't wanna make that a public document, because there is security information in it about manpower, and where different roadblocks go. But we have an inner perimeter and an outer perimeter. We're extending that outer perimeter to, um, Larry talked about Spring Street at Main. There'll be a hard block there, but, but the perimeter is actually gonna be out to South Main at summer. Uh, but there'll be a hard block in front of the, um, Historical Society. There'll be a hard block, you know, by the town pump, so someone can't drive through there.
Yep.
Uh, so it, it should be fine. I think the new plan is gonna be better.
Yep. I mean, we do, uh, we do events in this town, and for the most part, you know, it, it, they're not without some complications or some inconveniences. But, you know, we, we do do them, so I look forward to figuring it all out.
Yeah, and if, if someone wants to see the plan offline, you know, just, just let me know, and I can send it, but I, I just don't want it out in the public. There are written plans for it.
Your email and Facebook posts, though, were really helpful, and I think the diagram on there is easy to understand, so thank you for that.
Cool, no problem. The email, I, I wanna, I might send out a supplemental one as well, where someone, I get it, um, the picture's small. If you, you know, so I wanna give people the ability to pull that picture up and get a, yeah, get a, get a look at it, but I'm just having trouble.
One possibility is if you put a link in the social media thing and it go to a blow-up place.
That's exactly what you.
Yeah, now, exactly how to do that, I don't know, but it can be done. You should have somebody in your department know how to do that.
And we have, we have another, we, you know, we, we had a local vendor, um, help us, you know, with, with those drawings, and they took a lot of the noise out of those drawings. They just sort of boiled it down to what people need to know, and they have another one for the, for the Monday through Saturday parking that looks really good too. Simple to understand.
Why don't you finish your presentation, then, then we'll take public comment.
I think we're, I think we're good.
Anything else?
Still working on the video. We, we have a video, um, again, the video has more to do with the carriage house drop-off, um, the video's done. Uh, but I don't wanna, I didn't wanna confuse people.
So that'll be in a few weeks, the type thing, yeah?
Yeah.
As soon as we get a date from the vendor on when we're going to worry about lines and, and getting rid of the double yellow and moving it and doing everything else, we'll, we'll obviously notify Chris, and we'll get back to the board, and that'll, everything will be predicated off of that, as far as the parking changes go.
Okay. Good. Okay, if that's done, I'm gonna take some commentary first. I see a couple of hands in the audience, so, uh, this woman here, please, if you'd stand up and identify yourself, please.
Um, Marjorie Brown, Jerusalem Road, uh, representing the Carriage House Nursery School. This is a point of clarification. Um, at the last meeting, Jason presented us with a drawing that had, uh, the parking along Jason and Long Road that were adjacent to the Common. That was fifteen-minute parking, and that was the plan that you all voted, I, I thought, that you accepted Jason's plan. We have subsequently received a plan that has the parking along the Common on Jason and Long Road as standard parking. So we just need either the board of selectmen to vote that or, or clarify, just, we, we don't know which way we're going.
That's fine, thank you, and I think I hear two clarifying hands.
I, I can clear that up. I sent out the wrong version to, to Lynn, Faking the first time. She got the wrong, so she has the updated version as of last night.
Okay, so who has it, so that, um, Magic and...
Lynn, Lynn Faking.
So do you know how to get, so that, I just wanna saw if this woman is, can, can, uh...
Oh, yeah.
I, I know, sure.
So you know how, now to get it?
She's the director of...
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Yes.
Just to clarify to the board, the, the, the common sides of both Jason and Long Road will be where the fifteen-minute parking is. The other sides, the opposite sides, being toward the World War One Memorial and toward the New Town, will be the standard parking. The idea, again, was to allow people to let children off onto the common, so there will be fifteen minutes on both sides.
Right.
Okay, question answered. I see one more hand, or another hand.
Nancy Samdell, member of First Parish. Um, as you know, First Parish hosts many concerts during the year, memorial services, weddings of between a hundred and two hundred people. I just wondered what the specific solution is for handling all those cars.
Okay, I see a hand coming in, thank God.
So I think that, that is, that again is, is the situation when we talked about special events.
Yeah, I think we just...
And what we're going to start requesting is that when people have, are planning special events, and obviously a wedding can be planned quite a well, quite a ways in advance, a concert can be played to be quite a ways in advance, those things will go through the specific process that we normally do. So it's vetted by police, by fire, by all the town boards, right down to whether or not an entertainment license is required or a one-day liquor license, or whatever the case may be. Everything will be vetted by all the parties involved. I think the only other piece of that puzzle is something that's a short-term thing, or a short notice piece, and that's Chief Quigley.
So we, um, we made up, um, parking placards for, for people.
So this lady can see, yeah.
For special events. Uh, we could issue the church, you know, probably a dozen of these, but it can't be, it, you know, it has to be understood that it's for a special event. This can't be a daily thing because someone doesn't feel like walking from, from one of the side roads. It has to be a legitimate special event, um, because it'll defeat the purpose of this, this whole initiative. But we do have these, these are, you know, we have a cache of these now. And we're gonna be issuing these to, to the Director of Carriage House.
Okay, now, in discussions, it just dawned on me, is, is, is a, on the, uh, protocol, I know there's, there's a sheet that has the checklist of the things you do for events. So if it isn't there already, why don't you add a packing section so that that's always covered for events, you know?
There is a traffic plan section, yeah.
So packing is always addressed anyways, yeah? Okay?
And those are all numbered, though, so the church will be issued a certain range of numbers each church, so.
Or the community center.
Okay, is, is that question, I wanna make sure that question's, he has a floor, go to the next one. You have said on the question?
I, I'm just still not clear about a special event, if it happens very quickly. We are supposed to hand out placards, is anybody coming?
I believe you're gonna be issued some.
The question, the question, I guess, the question would be, what do you describe as quickly? If it's on a day, that's one thing. If we have two or three days' notice, obviously we've been planned for anything. If it's more than two or three days, if it's a week or two or three or a month, then we would suggest that you go through the typical process so it can be vetted by everybody. It's not just a traffic plan, it's a plan that affects every department in town, whether it be school buses, or DPW, or anybody else. So that's what we would ask, is, that would be the case. And I'm sure that we can create something to change our event planning so that these type of events are included in it. Um, we do these things constantly. Tonight, earlier tonight, we went through three events, actually four. So we do this constantly, and it happens by, very simply, somebody coming to Town Hall and making the event known. And once the event is known, then the appropriate parties are notified, we sit down, we meet, we go through everything. We meet with whoever is bringing the event forward so that we can make sure that all questions are asked at that point and everything moves forward in a timely and proper manner.
So it would seem that, you know, something maybe should formalized, or, th- these things gonna, this is the kind of thing, it sounds to me like, as we all work together to work it out, a, a system is gonna evolve on this. But to start off with, it sounds to me like if you're having any kind of an event, to notify Town Hall and then Chris and Tracy can set up a system whereby, once you're known of an event, email immediately goes to whoever the appropriate department is, and I'll leave that for you folks to set up a system for that, but that's... But as far as leaving tonight going, if you have an event, we'll let Town Hall know as soon as possible and it worked out, okay? Yes?
Diane, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Diane, you...
Yeah, uh, no, I, one, one thing I just wanted to add, and I know, um, Chief Quigley's kinda said it under his breath, but, I, you know, there are other churches and other, you know, so I, I just think as you look at whatever the system might be perf- for providing, you know, parking, um, placards, that we, we recognize that this is, this is a burden on not just, or, you know, hopefully it's gonna actually be a sensible traffic plan that provides for safety and provides for, for the kind of access that we want to our public common. But I, I, we have to understand that this is gonna impact just about everybody, whether they're Town Hall visitors and there's a Town Hall event, and there's a, you know, there's a Cohasset Drama Club in the, in the old Town Hall, or so. I, I just, I wanna just caution the public safety officials to recognize that, and, 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 and probably for the carriage house friends, that it's, you know, it's just not, we can't just give away passes. We have to be very smart about how parking is used around here, and we have to be as responsive as we can be to making it work for as many people as we can.
Yes, uh, uh...
Now, I just wanna mention that in the back of Town Hall, during the farmer's market season, we usually block off a little bit more space, but we bag the back, so there's another ten or twelve spaces that are open and for general use, uh, now that the farmer's market season's over. So, you know, there, there are almost always some spaces here during a regular day, um, and as long as they're not in the Town Hall employee slots, because we have to have, staff has to be able to come back from lunch and actually come back to work. But other than that, uh, and there's a couple of spots for, you know, handicapped and, and specifically for Town Hall business, people just wanna run in and out, there's another, I don't know, twenty-plus spaces typically available at any given moment here. Not every single moment of every day, but often. Uh, and those are, those are available, and we've done that specifically, made sure that the restrictions are lifted. Um, and in the summer, it's a little different because the pressures are, are different. During the winter, it's there, and on weekends, this place is open, too, so the whole lot is available on weekends.
Chief, and, and just to, to build on what Diane said, and I, you know, I, in thinking about this as she was talking, um, I don't think I want to issue the temporary permits to a private entity. I think I'd rather have them issued out of this office, um... I can just say, if I hand out ten, ten, you know, you're literally waiving the park regulation. Um, that shouldn't really be at the discretion of a private...
That falls into the category of, these are the systems that will evolve, so that may be the way that you wanna do it.
Yeah.
Chief Quigley, does that mean you want this back?
Just pocket it.
He's already...
No, Carrie, I gave her the carry.
We, and, and these, these things are already handled through this office. We, we get requests for, you know, different weddings at, you know, Light Keepers, um, you know, uh, certain situations at Sandy Beach or Wadley Park, so they'd probably be best issued, you know, by, by, by Tracy, the, uh, our excellent parking clerk.
I could say that.
We'd want to be like the beach stinkers, ending up on the black market.
Uh, and I would just, I would remind the board that we already make traffic changes in regards to different events. And Chief Quigley mentioned the farmer's market as one. We make, we make Highland Ave one way. We allow parking the full length of Highland Ave. There are a lot of things that can be done, but they need to come before and go through the process. And that's what the folks at the farmer's market do, and certain allowances are made. Nothing says that if there was some sort of a large event at one of the, the churches or one of the, one of the, uh, Town Hall or whatever, that what we do on Sundays couldn't be done on a Wednesday. It just needs to be planned for. So that's why we would ask that if anybody with as much notice as possible, and we understand that some things happen very quickly, but with as much notice as possible, changes can be made, and they would be, they would not affect all of the town departments. And that's what, you know, what the whole piece here is, is that communication is the, is the absolute key to this whole piece. Uh, Chief Quigley's favorite thing is, we can make anything happen, we just need to know about it. So I would just remind the board of that fact, that, that we don't know what we don't know, and we are very willing to adapt and, and work with folks as far as getting things done.
Good. I see a hand up, identify yourself.
Yes, Diane Cornet, Gatlin's Road. Um, we understand why, uh, the town doesn't wanna put up signs with, uh, four different drop-off and pickup times. We understand that, uh, during, for the nursery school. What was part of the solution was, uh, for us to schedule meetings that we have a lot of to help run our church between nine fifteen and eleven fifteen, and between twelve forty-five and three fifteen, to, to, uh, no, two forty-five. The two-hour bans for meetings, we were going to be given placards to use so that we could use those non-fifteen-minute, uh, those fifteen-minute things for standard parking, if we had an approved placard. I, it, it doesn't solve that problem if it's only for weddings. We have meetings all during the month, um, y- you know, lots of different committee meetings. And we, they aren't, they can't be held in our meeting house, that is only, doesn't have a basement. It is, there are lots of different rooms that we need to use for meetings over in the parish house.
So where are the meetings being held, in the parish?
They're in the parish house.
So in most parts of the season, of spring through fall, except for the, we're, wouldn't, how many people are involved in the meetings? And I'm thinking in my mind...
We're talking about, we're talking about committee meetings. This would be anywhere from, uh, six to twelve people coming for various committee meetings.
So wouldn't they, I mean, we have, couldn't they park where the normal pa- it sounds like this would be absorbed by normal parking?
Well, why, no, but why can't they, in the, the, the fifteen-minute parking only app- should apply during the drop-off and pickup times? And we understand why you don't wanna spell it out on the signs, but as part of our solution, when we were talking during several meetings, it was that we would be allowed to have parked placards that would be handed out by our, approved placards that would be handed out by our admin office to anybody having a meeting for two hours. And we would be only in that window that wasn't the drop-off and pickup.
Chris, I'm gonna...
You know, we, we, I'm happy to have a conversation to figure out how to make that work.
Okay.
So, uh, why, why don't we set something up? Uh, and again, I, I, the last thing my office wants to do is determine is parking where.
Sure.
Uh, so I, I'm, I'm absolutely willing to figure out something, give you the placards, and let you self-regulate. Understanding that, that this is, the whole system has been set up to be accommodating, so you self-police will be good. I mean, I don't wanna have to do that, uh, to, to, to be any more involved in that. So let's set something up, let's come in and, I mean, we want this to work, so.
Okay.
And, and you best understand your needs, and so does Saint Stevens, and so does, uh, Sacrament.
That was my point, yeah.
Uh, so, um, respecting that those were set up because of the community's request, because of the need for the... I mean, we understand how important Carriage House is to the community and to, to the First Parish. So, you know, happy to have you self-regulate that. So let's, so let's talk and, and make it work.
Now, the other thing is, on December seventh, we have, oh, oh, I haven't heard what the plan is for traffic flow and for people who are visiting the different churches. We have a lot of people coming in for the reusable sale, which is in the whole back part of our, all the churches have it. So what is the plan for the seventh?
During the day.
During the day, you know?
It sort of, it doesn't impact up, up, up this far. It's, it impacts the village itself.
So, to me, this, excuse me, but, uh, 'cause I don't wanna have the Board of Selectmen...
We're talking this offline.
Yeah, it, but it seems to me that what you have on December seventh is an event, okay? And there's plenty of time now to file that as an event. That'll go to the committee, which has been set up, and they should, quite logically, coordinate that with any other event. So that's how that'll work, is, is the system work. Chris, unless you have something to add?
No, 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 I don't, I, that's exactly what I was gonna say.
Yeah.
You're absolutely right on the money, Mr. Chairman, that's what we talk about, communication.
So bring that forward as an event, and it gets in, and it gets coordinated with all the others, and that's how we work together as a community to make sure this works together, 'cause the packing transition is gonna be worked for the whole community, and it's gonna be a coordinated thing, so. I think that should answer what you mean.
So we should let the team of people who are cooperating from all the churches know that they're supposed to come and fill out a form for that whole day? You know, this is...
Well, why don't we talk, wait, 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 I tell you, why don't we, why don't we make this up offline with, with the, with the chiefs? Uh, 'cause I, I think it, I mean, I've been to many of these over the last years, it's pretty self-regulating, and the Town Hall lot's wide open, 'cause it's on a Saturday. So I think it, I've not seen a problem with it before. I mean, I, I've parked here and walked all the way around, 'cause it's usually the easiest thing, but it's, it's, it's self-regulated pretty well, 'cause people can go during the course of the day, there's people all around, it's a great morning, it's a great, it's a great day. So I, I, I think we're gonna be okay, uh, so why don't we talk about it offline, so...
May, may I just ask, though, Chief Quigley said Monday through Saturday, and I, it was my understanding that it was Monday through Friday that this, the signs were being made.
It is Monday through Friday.
Okay, thank you.
It's Monday through Friday.
Thank you.
No, thank you for participating. Do we have another comment?
Yeah, hi, Elizabeth Dunn, uh, Beach Street. I, I also, so, common neighbor for a long time, uh, and I also, uh, chair a committee, uh, a property committee for both buildings of First Parish, so I kinda wear two hats. I'm just trying to understand how we went from, I, I attended one select person, select persons' meeting, and, um, the common is going to be no parking. But the sides, you know, the residential side of North Main and the residential side of Highland was going to have parking, it was gonna get lined, and it would, you know, we would take care of the, uh, public safety issue. Um, and I, I, I know quite well the needs of the carriage house as well, but, um, and I have spoken to my colleagues here at First Parish. Um, I, I, I don't understand why we can't have signage that accommodates drop-offs and pickups. I mean, there are signs all over the world that say things like "loading zone" between X and X, or in this case, it would be "school drop-off zone." I feel like we are creating a town that basically says, "Don't stop here." Um, and, and I say that, you know, the, I mean, I've lived through twenty-six South Shore Art Centers, Farmer's Markets, I live right around the corner, and, um, you know, there were a couple of years where there were these ominous no parking signs, um, for the South Shore Art Center. And I think it just sent a message, and frankly, if I drove down here from another town, enjoy the common, or go to the South Shore Art Center Festival or wherever, and, you know, there's parking all over the residential streets, and I'm told to go park up there and get in a shuttle bus. And I, I feel like, I think we can accommodate the drop-off and pickup needs of the carriage house as well as accommodate anybody who might want to enjoy the common, because, but we have actually blocked parking on Monday through Friday, eight to four, on what is probably the prime part of the common for people to enjoy. And it's not actually just because of the carriage house, it's because of some reason that we don't wanna have signage that somebody might have to stop and read. Um, kids can be dropped off safely within, you know, a half-hour window, and it's probably even a fifteen-minute window. But we could, or even give them an hour window, which is, but, you know, we don't even have nursery school Friday afternoon. But now we've made an entire stretch of North Main Street absolutely fifteen-minute parking all day long. Nobody can stop, throw a ball for their dog, play with their kids, and walk into town. Um, so I just, you know, and I know somewhere that decision got made, and I, I think we're gonna re-credit, um, as well as the church, you know, has a hard time conducting any kind of business. We run a nursery school, but we also just run an active community, and there's lots of people coming and going. But I, I'm actually, you know, there's, my colleagues are here to speak for the church, and I, I, I can speak to that, but I can really just speak to somebody who for twenty-six years has seen the common in use. And, um, you know, I don't know, three weeks ago, it was, "Don't worry, you can park all along, um, Highland Ave." But we basically made the common drive-through and look at it, but, you know, don't stop for forty-five minutes because it's fifteen-minute parking.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I think that's a mistake.
Okay, Diane?
I, I just wanna address it a little bit without going too far, because I'm one of the people that is very anti-signage, and it's more of an aesthetic issue for me, especially on the historic common.
The same sign, Diane, you can say, say it all.
Please let me speak.
Sure.
And don't interrupt me, and I appreciate you're a friend, but if you have been, anybody's been paying attention, we have... But if you have been, anybody's been paying attention, we have bent over backwards to be accommodating. We are trying things out. You know, this isn't, we're done, we're closing the town for business. That is not our, what we're trying to do. We have parking issues throughout this entire town, um whether you're going to Black Rock Beach, which is my big beef or the common. And we wanna try to do the right thing by the whole entire community. And we're not erecting walls or stopping people. It it it, there is gonna be some adjustments that people have to make. It is a public safety thing and I have been a big promoter of not parking along the common a- again, for aesthetic reasons and also for safety. I have a friend in a wheelchair who can't enjoy the common because there's no sidewalk, cause people have parked on it. Those were the genesis, that's the genesis of these discussions that we've had over the last month and a half. And we are open to continuing these discussions, but we don't wanna just set a bunch of signs in motion right away until we know how this is gonna work. And I think we've all expressed that. Um, you know, I I'm speaking for myself, but I think my colleagues would agree that that has been our uh motion all along.
And, yes, and we've gone over this quite thoroughly in a number of meetings. So we do have a complete plan and we're now starting to roll it out. But what we did do is we committed to coming back here officially anyways, but we're back already sooner than I thought we would be. But in March to review this whole thing, to see where it's, it would be that time, where it stands. So it'd be that time, we might take a look at, well, our signage need, do we need to make changes? Like, your your question is so, is very, very fundamental, but we've sort of been there and gone through a whole process to address that the best we can. It's just, it's planning without the event actually having occurred. So now we need to implement what what we've planned and discussed quite considerably. But we're gonna be flexible. We've already committed to that, to relooking at this and if something looks like it's not working, we're gonna work it, but we need to see how it all works first. And everybody's gotta show good cooperation uh to, you know, to give this good faith afterward. And we feel confident we're making this a much safer place and fulfilling the needs. So, but we will be looking at that, at at kinds of issues you're bringing up, but we need to, we're in the implementation phase right now. Hey, any other comments, questions? Okay, anything else? Gentlemen, thank you very much. Good. We look forward to uh good, smooth rollout and everybody cooperating. Thank you. Okay, um.
Arrest me, take me away.
The next item on our agenda um is the shellfish aquaculture Briggs Harbor update. Okay, uh, there.
So at the.
Chris, I'll get up. Go ahead.
At the request of the Board of Selectmen, uh I'm organizing tomorrow a forum uh on the shellfish aquaculture question. Wilkwood Commons, it's at six thirty. Um, I've invited and been speaking with users in Cohasset. Plan to have them all be able to give a brief uh description of what they do and 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 look at the the area, which is really Cohasset Harbor we're talking about. Um, that's how it's labeled. Uh, it's in the borders of the town district. Uh, we also have a commitment from situant to attend and to present as well. Uh, in fact, we've been having ongoing discussions. Kevin and I met with their town administrator and chairman of the board this morning. If anyone wants to talk more about that, you're free to jump in at any point. And I'm I'm hopeful that that, based on the conversation we had today, that that they'll have a chance to come tomorrow and hopefully reiterate, uh the the direction seems to be that they're looking to underscore that they're looking to do with some kind of a pilot, not a, not a, you know, let's take away the entire uh area and then make it off limits. What that scope of that pilot means, I think is still a bit of some conversation. And how the towns could partner is still a bit in that conversation. But I think there's an understanding that if there is some pilot, there's, there seems to be a great design to do. Uh, it needs to be on mi- on the margins as much as possible, so it doesn't impact the recreational uses. Understanding that we're talking about at least two years, maybe three, before there's any determination whether this is even gonna work. So you don't wanna wipe out any kind of public access and recreational uses for an experiment. Cause we already know the recreational uses work. We already know that people are out there. Uh, and I think, again, you, uh, there seems to be, there's a li- there's a willingness to listen. The Board of, the Selectmen and Situant took this off their agenda tonight. So they postponed uh ongoing questions about their regulations, which I think is a sign of the faith that they're willing to have a conversation. And they're willing to come tomorrow night to to engage in the conversation. So hopefully tomorrow will be an open, positive conversation. There'll be a continued recognition of the need for dialogue and also that this area is a prime regional recreational area. It's not simply Cohasset folks, though it's important to residents of Cohasset clearly, uh but it's used by others as well. And and there's a real, real need to recognize that. If there's a way for things to be cooperative and to have it work out for the, for for fishermen and as well as every uh non-fisherman, that will be awesome. I think, cause again, the the input that we're getting seems to be that there's an understanding of that. Uh, now in parallel with that, we clearly have to up our game in understanding aquaculture. It was something that's, you know, mentioned that the commercial fleet's a real important part of the harbor plan. It's important via the town's, by a character. But in aquaculture, you know, lobster's not the only game in towns. People do scallops down, there's other things. In fact, uh, there's, there's all, there's all kinds of cool things going on in other places. That said, i- i- we need to accelerate our knowledge of that. So uh based on a conversation, um Ted Carr was the last meeting. We talked afterwards. I met with him again. And in his magical rolodex, he popped out a a person, uh much like Jack Murray, who had been consulting first with the DOT and Cunningham Branch, who had worked at the agency, who knew everybody, and was super helpful in connecting us and keeping that process going, keeping a lot of communications going. And really helped us with a better project. Uh, and he's recommended someone named Leslie Ann McGee, who's actually grew up in town. She's Donna McGee's daughter. She grew up here. She served on some fishing boats. Uh, she became a marine biologist. Uh, she ran coastal zone management. Uh, she um ran the uh marine fisheries unit. It's now the assistant director for Tole. She really knows her stuff in this area. We had a nice conversation the other day. So I'm hammering out a little basic consulting agreement with her for her to just bring on aquaculture. She, she knows, she regulated, she knows the regulator, she understands aquaculture, um and the steps and hoops that have to go, to 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 be gone through. Um, and I, you know, we need to look at that. I think a town needs to look at area, you know, there's other areas in Cohasset waters that have aquaculture potential. And again, I'm not throwing this out because I'm recommending these happen, but you know, there's people grow seaweed. I know that sounds, you know, crazy. They're doing it along on sand, right?
Yeah.
Uh, it's, and and there's, there's mussels, there's mussels uh that are raised and raise clams. I mean, you can't see, I mean, in fact, the area we're talking about here with the the Cohasset Harbor Briggs Harbor is really a big giant clam flat to a large extent. Uh, so I think having her on board is, would be really helpful. Um, and I'm, and again, unless there's some objection, I'm gonna, I'll bring her, bring her on. We have some funds and, you know, we'll start small and see where we go. And I think in the long term, it might be helpful to have someone like that on anyway to talk about the future of the fleet and how we can work things and how we can maintain, you know, the Cohasset's fishing culture as well, uh and the econ- and the economy. Uh, at the same time, there there may be a need for a special counsel. At this point, I don't know that it's the, I I think it, and that we're there, we're not at the point where we actually need somebody to, you know, jump in and start laying down markers, um, I may. Uh, and I've started to do some research. Um, I think at this point, I might send the wrong signal. I mean, Situant's been cooperative and open. And we said they lawyer up. I understand the concerns of the community, believe me. Um, I don't know if the town should necessarily retain somebody to that. We should, you know, it's always there. It's an option. The board meets regularly. Depending how tomorrow goes and the next couple of weeks go, uh we'll see what's needed. Um, and we may better determine exactly what we need. So at this point, you know, the conversations are happening. Again, they happened just this morning. They'll happen tomorrow night. And um, you know, I I think there's an opportunity to talk and figure out a way that this can be, there's an opportunity to have a conversation to see if this can be worked out in a way that's, that's, that works for everybody. Both communities, all the residents who use the area, and the potential, whether or not aquaculture can actually work. I don't know. Uh, I mean, what you've asked me to do is just set up a forum to see if that communication can happen. That's what I'm trying to do. So that's, that's where we are.
Great.
Yep. Uh, Diane?
Questions. Is um Leslie Ann, is she available for tomorrow night?
No, I don't think I can have her tomorrow night. I believe, I wish I could. But I do have Tom Bell, uh, who's been doing some great work. He does all kinds of really interesting geology, but he's also a real active water sport guy. I mean, he fishes and 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 uh, it really knows, I mean, Tim and I have met with him a couple times. He's, he's really understands this area really well. He's done some great maps. He'll be there tomorrow to help.
And and just quickly, what's the general format for tomorrow? Do we have a commitment from anybody from Situant to be there?
Yes, we do. Uh, so so for, definitely the shellfish folks will be there. Um, I think a member or two of the Board of Selectmen may very well be there.
They indicated this morning that the uh, the chair would be there. The uh town manager indicated he'd be there and be willing to speak. The chair actually would make a presentation if we want, which I think we should. He said also that the uh, the woman who's headed up the Shellfish Advisory Commission is very knowledgeable about this, Susan.
She was here last, she was at our.
She was here last night.
Yeah. She's, she would be willing. So I think we should have those folks presenting. Uh, yeah.
Is Sean Harris the chair?
I also.
Tony Vigna.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, so and and my, my impression from talking with him this morning and talking around and getting the feel of the vibes that's going on in the communities is this has definitely um got them, you know, they're pausing. That would be a good proper way where they're pausing and they're reflecting and they're hearing and listening. You know, the concerns of this project and they're hearing from it uh a good amount on from the Situant side as well as the Cohasset side. And I think that the public, uh, the dialogues that we're having, the communications, which I would continue to uh encourage everybody to communicate, whatever format you wanna communicate, this petition, this online posting, letters to the and, you know, whatever, communicating is a, is a good, healthy thing. Because I think that communication done in a polite, professional manner is getting their attention, which is what it should do. They're very serious about their town and their governance and they do not want, from my indications that Chris and I had, you know, they they wanna work well with Cohasset, don't wanna have problems with Cohasset. So they're listening. So I think that the dialogue tomorrow night should be thorough on all ends, expressing what the concerns are, listening to where they're at. And then, uh, as uh, I think it was Churchill who used to say, didn't so much listen to what people said, but he watched what they did. And then I think we'll watch what they're doing. Uh, and we may, you know, be a better, a proper way to look through it. So one of the things, for example, they took it off the agenda for tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they were gonna have another fo- forum and they indicated maybe they're not gonna have another forum. And at least no plans for it now. So this is, you know, I'm hearing that they're, they're thinking and watching and so polite, professional, thorough communication is helpful. Can, and and they, you know, on all ends. And I think, you know, tomorrow night's a good dialogue. And if it goes really good, we can have it again. And we'll, you know, I can engage. I I feel, and I feel as though if we bring an expert in and make them available to the harbor committee and sounds, Chris will organize all of that and the knowledge gathering and at the same time reflecting on, in case we need it further. But I don't think we need to go any further on that, that this is sort of work. This, and yeah, and also, um, I'll leave it at that. I think that this, if we, we take it in that way, we'll have a more healthier result than a lot of people are are concerned about. But if we don't, we'll have, we'll deal with that however we need to deal with it. So, uh, Paul.
Um, I was delighted to see that they pulled it off their Board of Selectmen, uh, again, more.
Yeah.
I think that shows relatively good uh, good conscience when it comes to something that is obviously interactive with the the towns and very uh intrusive to our use of the watershed there, of the water sheet, I guess they call it. And I'll actually, they have to present tomorrow. So I'll, I'm delighted that the Board of Selectmen will be there as well.
Yeah.
Jack? Yeah, uh, I actually know Sean Harris fairly well. I've known him. I think he's been selecting for twenty-five years. And I, I, we talked, had a very pleasant, friendly talk. And I got the strong feeling from Sean that they really do wanna work with us. And they wanna make sure that we're working with them and I assure them that we'd like to do this. And, you know, nobody says anything, but we all know that we have some other business with them down the line, which of course will be the sewer pipeline. And I think that there's a sense on everybody that we're neighboring communities. We have a lot in common. Um, and I think that's very positive. Um, the other thing that I have is that we did, as the board, um, asked to uh, for Chris to look in this and what the legal situation is. And I know our town council, which was already on there, is uh very knowledgeable and deemed an expert by some in agriculture. So I think we certainly should get him involved, not by hiring a special counsel in an antagonistic manner. But I think it's important to have him give us the type of legal background of where we stand and the various issues that may come up. And because he's already our special counsel, we're not signaling an adversarial type of thing. This would be a normal thing that you would normally do. You call, that's why we have a special counsel. You call him up and say, what's going on here? Where do we stand? Are there issues? Are there things like very practical thing, the presence of yield grass, tremendous. But anyway, I would like to see we, we get a little bit of that. But again, I think the really good news is that both communities have expressed a desire to work together, and I think we should.
Okay, uh, Chris, you wanna go before Ralph? You're set. Uh, Ralph, you can identify yourself, please.
I'm Ralph Dormitzer, one eleven Atlantic Ave.
Welcome, Ralph.
About a week ago, there was a meeting at which Tom Bell appeared and a number of other experts. About fifty people attended that meeting and heard quite clearly what the impact of the oyster farming would be. I welcome tomorrow's meeting. I think that makes a lot of sense. But based just on that one meeting, we have overwhelming public opposition in Cohasset. I'm sitting on eight pages now, which are, which are increasing by a page a day, of people who are absolutely opposed to this. And I'd say you have to sort of understand the reason for the opposition and not, it's not just recreational use, which is, which is significant for the Cohasset Sailing Club, for the Cohasset Yacht Club, for the uh C, uh CMI, for in other words, enormous use by not only Cohasset people, by a lot of people. So the first thing people say is, is gonna be a recreational, is a diminished recreational use. And for many people who use that area, including me, is a significant issue and actually will preclude lots of things we do. So you understand what we see and I understand it pretty well. The second thing is that the way you look at this, which is different than perhaps you've been, we're looking at it up till now, is that this is the use of public land for personal, private gain. That's what this is. It may sound good to do aquaculture, but in fact, the people who will get licenses are doing it to make money. They're not doing it for a nice, you know, to improve the use of the public spaces for aquaculture. They're doing it for money. And they're taking private, they're taking public land for private use is what's going on here. So what people see and why you're going to get an overwhelming, continuing objection to this in this town is that both those things, the the reduction in recreational use, which will be real. And second is the idea that we would actually give up, in Iglo, if we had the right to, to give up, to give up public land for private, personal gain is a pretty tough thing to overcome. And I understand the legal issues and I understand how difficult it's going to be. But you have to understand, many people are extremely upset about this. We know from Facebook posts with just likes, we have about eight thousand likes from the two Facebook posts. And hundreds of people who are just writing and emailing me and, you know, emailing CYC's, CSC and C, I mean Coastal Zone Management. So it is very significant what we're doing now. And if this whole thing is not to, all the petitions are not to, let me see, what it is for, is to support you guys, right? That's what it's about, to say, this is why people are concerned in whatever you finally decide to do, you'll have the people behind you if in fact you've come up with something that works. But if in fact this isn't gonna work for, for some reason, you've got a lot of people who are gonna support you as well. So the thing is, people are opposed and they will remain opposed until something very significant changes about all this, especially the issue recreation and second of, private use for personal gain.
I wanna s- um, so no, you can say that. So really, you know, what you're talking about, that you're doing, the effect of it is uh, is helpful and it's very, it's very normal and fundamental to our constitution and our way of life. I don't mean to sound, you know, historical here, but this uh, First Amendment covers the right to petition your government.
Yeah.
And that's what you're doing. And I applaud that. And I think anybody would applaud that from Situant otherwise. That, that, that's the reason, I don't mean to get, let me get a lecture here, that's the reason the First Amendment is there. You're exercising it. Uh, you should continue to exercise it fully. And I will say from my observation that your exercise of your rights under the First Amendment to petition your government is already having an effect. So continue to communicate, you know, the people who designed the system we operated on, uh, were pretty smart even. And um. And, um, even in two hundred and fifty years later, there's a real use for the tools that they gave us and the freedoms that we have. And it's already having an effect. I knew that from just a personal meeting this morning and, uh, that almost alone, exercising our rights of petition and, and discussion may even win the day in itself, but there's plenty more we can do, I think is, uh, we can do on that. So, uh, you're doing fine, you're doing right. Keep doing it, express it politely and thoroughly tomorrow and continue and I, I think that you'll see the system. By that, I mean our constitution's gonna work in your favor, in our favor.
Thank you, Chris, Jimmy. Just equally, it is again to support, right? And second is to give a little push.
Well, I could, my, my point of view would.
It's not quite simple, right?
We hear you loud.
My, my point of view is, from the board's point of view, is this is a significant, this is a significant effect.
Yeah.
It affects the general welfare of the community.
That's right.
Uh, it's very much board of selectmen business. It's not anything, it would be my point of view, that we, this is a, this is a significant event and this is what you have your governments built into our system and actually our constitution, our charter, that the general welfare of the community is under the purview of the board of selectmen. And, you know, if not us, who, so we, well, that's our responsibility too. And working together, I'm pretty confident, I'm pretty confident that a just-in-fair result is gonna occur here. And, but, but we're here to do what we need to do to, uh, you know, be positive for the community. And if you could stay seated, I think I, you know, it's a system.
Yeah, I, 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 just to take off on that, I mean, I think, yes, it's a, I, I see it also as a two-pronged attack because, I mean, we also have responsibility for the munis- to protect the municipality, the business entity of the town of Cohasset, um, which i- in my mind, one of the other pieces that this is a real problem for is just our municipal services. I mean, we have a harbor that we, you know, we can't keep up with the demands of, of the use of the harbor for our own residents and our own, um, you know, our own lobstermen and other fishermen, you know, our, you know, we need new docks, we need pulley systems. We have to dredge every couple of years because we're so small and, and it is so vibrant. And, and any entity, uh, any extra use of the harbor puts an, will put an enormous strain on the finances of the town. So, so we have that responsibility too, which is, which is huge. And, and then, you know, then there's this just general citizen outcry. So I see two parallel tracks, but we're walking together. So, you know, to what ca- I, I, I think we're all doing the right thing by just talking about it and getting out there and learning as much as we can and, and, uh, you know, just stay tuned.
Yeah, and, and, and the, uh, the public media, that which is left of it, uh, because it's, I, we always have to say it's declining, but there's, has picked up on this and are already writing articles about this. And there was a significant one in the Situate Mariner, I think that they put online, but it'll probably, the press is covering this. And, and, you know, again, not to sound corny, but that's what that press is for and to pressure self, they'll be there tomorrow night and, um, you know, we're gonna have a dialogue and, uh, I think everybody will be listening, the right thing will occur, okay?
Historically, it's, I'm sorry, I was gonna say, it's a very simple thing. It's an anom- almost an anomaly this is happening to us because obviously this whole thing started in around sixteen forty, right? When in fact that land was divided and then again, it was divided between, of course, Situate and Cohasset in about the eighteen hundred, eighteen fifties, or eighteen forty, something like that. It's a real anomaly that this land was actually moved and given to Situate. It was for hay, that's what the original reason was.
I only hope it wasn't lost over a poker game or something. Jack will probably find out. Uh, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
So I, um, I, I'm with Diane, you know, there's, there's a, a harbor here that has no fuel, no ice, no lift.
Yeah.
No ability to access a working shellfisherman, uh, to the extent any more than what we have for lobstermen. It's all manual, it's all pouring in fuel, it's pouring in ice. Um, this is the source of, just the infrastructure is not there. And I think it's gonna demand an awful lot of the harbor because they're not gonna go to, they're not, they're not gonna go to hang them up to fuel up, to get ice, to, you know, to unload. They're gonna unload here, they're gonna try to fuel up here and that, you know, that's a, a concern where, I think they've got a lot of, you know, launches going out, tending the shellfish bed, that is potentially, although maybe a trial, simple project to begin with. I, I looked at the map and it's lots of acres, you know, lots of acres and it's pretty much that whole area. So, um, that in addition to that, that watershed, I mean, I, I've been out there on a kayak and it's gorgeous.
It's gorgeous.
There's, there are a few places you can go with a, a simple kayak, a young sailor that goes out there and not to worry that they're too far from shore, that the water's too deep, that the water's too rough. It's, it is a perfect place for, for the town, so I think that's, uh, a key element as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Tim, you wanna open it in the face now?
Uh, Tim Davis, Atlantic Avenue, uh, Chair of the Harbor Committee. Let me, uh, just put a little historical framework on this. When the, uh, Harbor Committee started the harbor planning process, one of the things we identified as a committee was the benefit of agriculture in Cohasset Harbor in the waters around here. And we thought, we've named it in the plan, it's a good thing. At about that time, uh, I started with others of my colleagues, meeting with some of the folks in Situate about this issue, about, we'd heard that they wanted to do some agriculture in, uh, Cohasset Harbor. And the impression I got, and I only speak for myself, I may have been misled, I may not have understood, but the impression I got was there would be a small three to five acre agriculture farm in Briggs Harbor. Now, you may know where Briggs Harbor is. It is in a small corner of Cohasset Harbor. It's very small, three to five acres, that's what my impression was. Two months ago, uh, our harbor master went to a meeting and saw the plan, which was thirty-two acres of agriculture, which encompasses virtually all of outer Cohasset Harbor. And now I've heard, and Chris mentioned, they have proposed a pilot program. The pilot program I've heard is seventeen acres, which is a fairly large pilot program. And I'll only refer to you, uh, to the example of some sailors that came into the south shore in sixteen twenty and told the people living there, there was a pilot program, will only be here for a couple of years. So I caution you to listen carefully about the language that is being used. I also have sent out many memorandums to the Situate people, the Cohasset people, to the people that are residents, the people that are in the various organizations that use this. And I basically said, look, there are no bad people here. Everybody's trying to do what's in the best interest of their community, or in the case of the fishermen, what's in their economic best interest. They're all trying to do the right thing. We do have to come together as a community. And I've been saying to Chris and to you, we really do need a cohesive, strategic Cohasset plan to deal with this. So I applaud tomorrow night. Uh, I hope to find something new and exciting that's coming out of that. Uh, I can tell you, as, as Ralph said, there are many, many people that are up in arms. Uh, I'm not sure we've gotten to storming the Bastille yet, uh, but people will be marching in the, on Highland Avenue. Parking will not be an issue, they'll be marching if we don't get this thing settled.
Thank you, and, uh, I don't wanna give anything away from tomorrow night, but come and listen. I think they have been listening. You may, you know, have better, I want them to speak for themselves tomorrow night. The processes of dialogue is, I think, helping. So, but the Situate people will come and say what they said tomorrow night.
Post a meeting.
Oh, it's a postal, yeah.
So we can, we can talk and.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
We post these.
So we posted that as a selectmen's meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, and so we'll have to open it as a meeting, okay. So, hey, tomorrow night, let's go through that and work it together, okay? It's gonna be a while, but we're working together on this tonight, I think we're.
Just, I just wanna also say, I'm unfortunately unable to attend tomorrow night too. It's like the worst week and dates came up.
You're killing, you're keeping one foot too busy with their production of films.
I, I'm really, really sorry, but I have two major obligations. So, um, anyway, I won't be there, but I will check in and hopefully could get some, if it's being recorded, I'll watch and listen, so.
Yeah, good, good. Okay, anything else on the subject before we move on? Chris, anything else on this?
Yep, I'm good.
All right, the next item is a sewer plant update and, and there's a vote, uh, looks like it may be required relative to an emergency declaration to accelerate the procurement of a new filtration equipment. Very exciting stuff.
So, uh, if I can have Brian and Don join us.
If you're on sewer.
Yeah. We're all gonna have to your house.
Hey, we're our, we're our commissioners. I know they're watching.
Yes, thanks. As, as we have reported, uh, to all of you and to the public at large, uh, so that back on November fourth, uh, in a, in a good, uh, practical move, the, uh, town approved a request for the sewer commission to fund seven hundred thousand, or seven hundred thousand dollars to replace, it was called Train One, but for the purposes of not confusing, I'm just calling it Side One. They call it Trains for some reason, but it's Side One and Side Two. Uh, so, uh, both systems are a composite, they're a tube, they're, uh, uh, they're spaghetti strands. And, um, they treat the water to theoretically drinkability standards and it's, it's cleaned out. Uh, they last seven to ten years, they're at about their twelfth and they kind of usually gradually decline and the plan was to, you know, run them as long as possible and then start replacing them. So the funding happened on the fourth, literally within a day or two, Side One stopped working. So, um, uh, Brian jumped into service literally in the field, uh, the, 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 our, our wooden current operator, they brought in folks from all around, they looked at the system, they took it apart. Uh, and by the way, in the interim, Side Two is exactly the same as Side One, is functioning fine, so that's all going fine. So there's never a problem with the plan. So the, the, there's been a lot of efforts made to take, ease the burden on, on, on Side Two and we accelerated the, the purchase of Side One's equipment, so that's now ordered and on its way. The thing is that probably won't be here until spring at this point, because it's a, it's a twenty-week lead time to construct these things. And then it'll be installed. So the installation is terribly complicated, but it does take a little time. At the risk of, and now in the interim, Side One is actually working, I'll have Brian, have Brian talk a little bit more about, uh, the logistics of this. We're like, you know, we don't wanna have to, if we have to wait till special, we, there's, there's another four hundred thousand dollars in the sewer capital stabilization. So there's plenty of money to go up to the full, that one-one, it'll take about one point one million to replace both sides together. And some extra money was allocated just in case for the cycle with, and I think the cost is going to be about half a million dollars for the first side. So we have the rest of the money, it's just, it can't be allocated or appropriated until town meetings. So either, there was a consensus that it's time to do something now, but we don't wanna run the risk of Side One refailing and we're Side Two failing. Uh, that would be a bad thing. And in order to do that, we either get a special town meeting vote or Don discovered by actually meeting with folks from the Department of Revenue at Meet the Conference he was at, that we can exercise something called Chapter Forty-four, Section Thirty-one, which is providing for emergency expenditures. He talked with them, explained it, and they said, good, this, this is a, this is a possibility. What happens is the, the governing board, which in this case is the Board of Selectmen, is declaring local emergency. Now, when I say that, you know, every, the plant is functioning fine. The emergency is that with the lead times involved and, and the processing, uh, of appropriations and all, we need to act now. By acting now, uh, we can order the materials now and then be able to install Side Two right after Side One. We'll, we'll, we'll have that kind of enough lead time so that the plan will be fully clean, it will be fully updated i- in time for summer, where uses usually go up, and also in time for the two-fifties, so we don't have any problems during the summer or any events. Sewer commission met yesterday, they voted unanimously to recommend that the, the selectmen invoke Section Forty-four, uh, Chapter Forty-four, Section Thirty-one. And I have a little note from their clerk to that effect.
Want you to read it, want you to?
Uh, the sewer commission is faced with the decision of expediting the purchase of Side Two membranes. After much discussion regarding the lead time associated with manufacturing, the board has Finance Director Don Pyatt for options to appropriate funds. Pyatt, the only way to appropriate funding to expedite this purchase is for the town of Cohasset's BOS, Board of Selectmen, following the guidelines pursuant to MGL Forty-four, Section Thirty-one. The members of the sewer commission agreed and voted unanimously to recommend the board of selectmen take action pursuant to Mass General Law, Forty-four, Section Thirty-one.
Okay, so we've understood all that, make sure that's in the, the record of the minutes, Tracy.
Uh, do you wanna explain, uh, a little bit more about the plant?
Could I, could I just ask one quick question? Which is why, um, this wouldn't go, and you already answered this question for me, but just for everybody in, those at home, why this wouldn't go to, like, advisory for reserve funding?
There's not enough money. The, the advise, the, the reserve funding has a couple hundred thousand dollars in it, so it's not enough to get us there.
And the money we need now with this, if we were to.
Is about, is about another four hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
And that's available, it's just in the capital stabilization fund. The only way to get that is either a town meeting appropriation or this emergency declaration. Uh, so, and again, we, we didn't need to, we had to put up a third, is that like a thirty percent gap payment, something like that? I, I, I think is what Michelle told us. So we're not gonna have to complete the payment until it's actually onsite installed. So, and that actually might come into pretty close, you know, linking with, uh, town meeting.
Right, but still needs to get, but needs to be spent.
But it's inappropriate, yeah, we have to commit the money before we can order anything under the law, so. And the only way to accelerate that, and again, I appreciate all the research on that, and literally meeting with the Director of Accounts. So we went right to the top of the food chain on this and said, how do we do this? And she said, this way.
So, how, how do we execute a public emergency?
You take a vote and you, and you determine that it's a public emergency.
Board of Selectmen can execute, uh, public emergency declaration and from that point, using Chapter Forty-four, Section Thirty-one, that would allow us to do this.
Correct. And Brian can explain more about the plant if you wanna, if you wanna put more into the records.
He's even got language we read.
I have a draft letter for you too.
Uh, so just generally, our plant is, is four hundred and fifty thousand gallon design, uh, gallons per day design, uh, flow. It takes sewage from North Cohasset, generally the coastal area around Little Harbor and all of Cohasset Village up, uh, Pond Street and the hills. So there's two trains, as Chris mentioned, um, the flow, the treatment, uh, the tertiary treatment has happened throughout this entire, um, event. Wooden Incarnate Contract Operator has done a good job, taking everything apart in the plant, diagnosing exactly what's going on, fixing a few issues and, and optimizing what they can of, of Train One, which had initially stopped working. They recovered some of that capacity, so we're working with limited capacity on Train One. And Train Two, that is also, um, twelve years old. So they both need to be replaced, um, and, and this is gonna help us go do that. We're, we're doing other contingency things like, uh, setting more flow to hull through our IMA with hull. So we're taking load off the plant and, and doing everything that needs to happen in the interim while these get manufactured.
So, it looks like headless and problems, the first one goes, the second's coming.
Well, actually, to your profession, it's like having a kid, you took a kid, one's going down.
So you have the filters.
So I guess my big concern is catastrophic failure of the other half. So we have hull as an option and we could potentially shift some there. Are there any other stopgap measures we could potentially use?
So we divert as much as we can to hull, which is the pressure, uh, the low-pressure system, uh, basically from Highland Ave going northward. Uh, but the gravity system's going to our plan regardless. Uh, so if we lost two, we would, we would end up doing a, a reduced treatment. It wouldn't be tertiary treated.
So it'd just be sent out?
It would be treated, but not, uh, so the, so membrane filtration is basically a microfilter. It filters down to point one microns, which takes on all bacteria and viruses and then it's, uh.
So this would be a sanitary, but not necessarily clean?
It wouldn't be filtered.
It'd be second, it'd be secondary as opposed to tertiary.
You mean in its present state?
No, as, as, if we, if it failed, we could clean it to the point where it'd be sanitary, but it wouldn't necessarily.
It would be disinfected, right?
Yeah.
Be disinfected.
And so this water drainage goes into the harbor, right? So is that, obviously you must be setting up testing of that.
Because it's.
So, Carl, let me just mention again that we haven't had any loss of treatment. It's still a really high-quality effluent leaving the plant. Um, you know, it goes, it goes through, uh, an toxic tank, uh, aerobic, uh, system filtered, then UV disinfection, chlorination, dechlorination. So all that's still happening and, and the effluent is, you could pretty much.
But we are in an emergency situation and it does, would not take very much to cause a catastrophic.
So the, the emergency is basically our loss of redundancy.
Right, exactly, which you need to have.
Right.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
You know, in some municipalities, I think when there's a large flood, it may overflow the, the water treatment plant and there's, there's effluents going into the various watersheds, which, um, that's happened along, like, the hurricane scene that hit Jersey, it was, it was wiped out of. And there was raw effluents going in, so we're not there and that's what we're gonna try to prevent. And we have some redundancy, but this is to prevent potential trouble.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that. So I and I, which is influent infiltration, it's, that's, that's the big thing that, you know, overcomes plants when you have big rainfalls or, or astronomical high tides. We, we're going through an I and I, uh, project right now where we're getting the worst manholes, you know, waterproofing them along Martin Street, Border Street, our tide gate, which, uh, does Jacobs Meadow, is gonna stay in storm mode till we have these membranes in, so that reduces the, the pressure that's over the sewer pipes in there. So there's a lot, uh, going on behind the scenes on. There's a lot going on behind the scenes on, on the I N I to prevent that kind of extra flow that doesn't need to be treated, because it's not sewage, it's just rainwater.
Any other questions? What needs to be done to effectuate the...
So you, so you need to do a motion, and I, and Don drafted a letter, which I tweaked a little bit, which references your vote. And it explains, basically, we've already talked about, and this is the basic last paragraph is, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Forty Four, Section Thirty One, the Board of Selectmen, with the concurrence of a unanimous Board of Sewer Commissioners, it says, has voted, in this case, votes to declare a local health emergency and advance a necessary appropriation with Department of Revenue approval to allow for a procurement of the Side Two filtration system. So you can make a motion of, of something like that, which is the last paragraph, tweaked a little bit. Basically, you're invoking, you're declaring a, a local emergency at the Cohasset Sewer Plant pursuant to MGL, Chapter Forty Four, Section Thirty One, and requesting approval from the Director of Accounts to incur liabilities without...
So probably two motions, one to declare a public health emergency, and then to declare this...
That's fine, that would be fine.
So making a motion that we, as Board of Selectmen, vote to declare a local health emergency and advance necessary appropriations with DOR for procurement.
Second.
Period, no, we'll back and say what we're gonna do.
Okay, and first, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye opposed, nay.
I make a motion that pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Forty Four, Section Thirty One, the Board of Selectmen, those of us here, with the concurrent of a unanimous Board of Sewer Commissioners, has voted to declare a public, I'm sorry, a local health emergency and advance a necessary appropriations with the Department of Revenue approval to allow a procurement for, quote, Side Two, that is what we discussed, replacement now with the installation in late spring two thousand twenty.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, okay, well, actually, in the discussion. So what we're doing, by the way, we would be doing on, this is, the, the one that had trouble with it, was due to be replaced after a vote in the spring meeting, in other words, it's, it's at the end of its cycle anyways, it just passed away sooner than, you know, we had expected. So that this is something that we would ordinarily be approving, in all probability, in the spring meeting and installing this in the fall. This is just really rushing it up, so we're not really, we're just speeding up the natural process of what it is, and wanna make that clear. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye opposed, nay, that's unanimous.
Did they, are they, are they...
No, no, I just need you to sign that letter, and then Donald send it out, and we'll be good.
Can I just, this is just what we said.
Yep, that's what we just said. And then we'll attach a resolution, we can just certify something tomorrow that the Board voted like this, so we can attach it. I don't know if it's required, but I just assume.
Why don't you attach to this?
Yeah, a, a resolution of the vote.
A resolution of the vote, yeah, how about the Sewer Commission vote to just attach it? So make sure their vote is attached to it, too, okay? Yeah, we settle on this? Two things, one's not really... Don, this is a critical problem of yours, so the fact that you came up aggressive, you know, assertive, took the initiative to find out a creative solution that really worked, and it saves us, allows the town to act quickly, and in a state of possible emergency, also saved us a special town meeting, for which we particularly thank it.
He does as well, actually, in his own self-interest.
Seven, five to seven grand, maybe.
Wanna know, and thank you for doing that and taking the initiative.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it, okay?
But you know, I do like those special town meetings.
Brian, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the Alternative Energy This Committee, and they make periodic, in this case, quarterly updates to us as to their activities, and what's going on, and what's needed, and so forth. So we will now commence with that. I see greenness entering the room.
Yes.
Yes.
Welcome. No, excuse me, just give it all to Tracy.
Do you? All right. Perfect, yep, I'm just gonna give her a couple, okay? And then when we have everybody pull a chair up, so that we can present as a...
Thanks for all being here.
Team aggregation.
Team aggregation. I'm in the cheerleading section.
There you go, you're right here.
Are you a member?
Yes, yes, I am.
You're all welcome.
If you'd introduce yourselves, and then whoever's speaking, go ahead and commence speaking.
All right, great, hello.
You're welcome.
I'm Tanya Bodell, eighty eight South Main Street, and Chair of the Alternative Energy Committee. And we've been tasked, as you know, with a new mandate, which we'll talk a tiny bit about, but also we have an obligation to give quarterly reports to you. And this is the perfect time to do it, because we have some action items that are happening with respect to community aggregation. But there's also, on December ninth, we're going to have a meeting to talk about our strategic plan for two thousand twenty and set the priorities on what we should focus on, and so we'd like your input on that as well. We've put together a presentation that gives a summary of where we are. We'll start by introducing the committee, and I will say, of all the committees I've worked on, this is one where everybody takes a role, and so I thought it was important to have each of them talk to some of the work that they're doing and that they've been focused on, to give an update to you as part of this. So we'll be talking about team achievements to date, solar update, energy efficiency update. We'll talk about community choice, electric aggregation, and then our next steps, what we're thinking about, and then that might get some creative juices going on your part, to just suggest now or before December ninth, for us to discuss that our strategic planning. So one of the key differences with respect to our energy mandate, let's leave this over here, is, as you know, there's a new focus that's not just for the benefit of the town, but also for the town, capital T, but for the town's citizens. And so it's more outward looking, more community oriented. So we're taking that very seriously and thinking through what types of programs are available to help members of the town, as well as the town itself. Tanya Bodell, as I've already said, I'm twenty-five years a consultant in the energy industry. I'm Patricia Gooding, and she's a Vice Chair.
Vice Chair. And I'm just interested in green energy and helping the town.
Great.
And, and returning after four years of Alternative Energy Committee. Steve Girardi.
Steve.
Oh, exerting a light, uh, committee for four years, Chair for one year, Vice Chair for three.
And he's our Secretary.
Oh, for now.
For now, for now.
I'm learning how to write.
Steve, serve you well.
Hi, Steve Winter, live on Hull Street, I'm Chair of the Aggregation Subcommittee.
Good. Um, Mary Jo.
I'm Mary Jo Larson, and I have been involved with Alternative Energy for about five years, Vice Chair and Chair for a number of years.
Um, Bill Fusco, Fusco's not here, but he's an advocate for Alternative Energy and what it could be for the future. And he's done some great work on giving us some dashboards that we all get to thank him from, and you'll see some of that as well. Mike?
Mike Schmidt, just started three months ago with the committee. I previously worked at Pilgrim New for the Power Plant, and I currently work at Hull Municipal Light Plant as the Assistant Manager.
Great.
And then, of course, Michelle is our liaison, Michelle Leary, from the town.
Good.
Chris has been to our meetings already, so, and Brian Joyce also is very connected. So a lot of, we see our role as being an advisor and assistance, but also to the extent we can generate ideas on things to pursue. So, I'm sorry?
Did you introduce Mary Jo?
Mm-hmm, yes, I did introduce myself, but thanks, Steve, I'm here.
Mary Jo did introduce herself. So Steve, we're now on page five, do you want to give a quick update?
So across these last three years, we've done over four and a half million dollars of savings. So with grants, it's over at Solar Energy, it's been great, the hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Grant community, Green Communities Phase One was two hundred and ninety, Grant Green Communities Phase Two was one hundred and ninety. And the streetlights, they look great. About sixty-two thousand dollars, and finally split the issue by project, and has the estimate return investment in three years, which is very good.
Great.
Altogether, lower the cost of energy in the town.
Great. And it's green energy, too.
It's good energy, too.
Exactly, and the EVs, of course, have been very popular, and there are gas cost savings from the EVs, and we receive grants, so it was sort of a no-brainer, and we're trying to do more of that, along with the charging stations. Mike, do you want to talk about solar? This is one of our dashboards that Bill put together, and this is as of the end of, that says the end of September in your packets, as of the end of October.
Yeah, so some great numbers from the solar facility. Since inception, it's put out one point three million kilowatt hours savings to the town, hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. CO2 reduction of one point two million pounds of CO2, which equates to thirty thousand miles driven in a car, so pretty great numbers.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And nicely turning on backgears.
Exactly, yeah. Thanks for this data, this is a...
Well, yeah, that's our job, it's our quarterly reports, to give you an update. Now Patricia, an unsung hero with respect to the Green Communities program, put in all of the data, and that's data they're now tracking. So on slides seven and eight, she's gonna talk through where we are with respect to our goals. Patricia?
Yeah, so I know this looks like a really interesting slide, and I'd like to go through each number with you, but essentially what I'm gonna try to give you is an overview, and for the sake of time and anything you have a question on, I'll try to answer. But essentially, when you look at this slide, what it's telling you is the data that Michelle Leary looks at and reports on for purposes of keeping us in line with our Green Communities program plan for the town of Cohasset. So we had a five-year plan to reduce our energy efficiency, reduce our energy usage, sorry, by twenty percent. And so what this database does is it actually tracks the usage across some broad categories, as you see here, the buildings, the streetlights, water and sewer, et cetera. And it not only tracks our usage and tracks, you know, where we've made changes from terms of investments that Steve talked about and use of the grants, but also helps us to target, you know, where to focus our energy changes on a basis. So we have a, an understanding of where we can make the biggest bang for the buck there. So our goal was twenty percent, and we started with twenty-fourteen baseline. Right around twenty-sixteen, something happened, we had a big spike in, in building usage. And can anyone think of what might have coincided with the spike in energy usage from buildings around that time?
Volca Commons?
Yep. Exactly, so we had an unforeseen building that came into this, and because of that, we didn't quite make our twenty percent goal. But we've been pretty darn close so far, we're at nineteen percent, and we're still making improvements. So as we go forward, on page nine, we're gonna say, talk about here, really, I just want to point out that we're doing this not based on a weather-normalized reporting, and that's as deep as I can go, because I don't, can't talk to you about normalized weather. But we are still going to reap more benefits because of the LED conversion that was only completed this year, so we should continue to see some reduction from that, and, and some of the other things that are ongoing.
Right.
We're doing some big stuff at this cycle at the schools, I think at, I think water, water, yeah.
Water is also doing some, and what's very nice about this is, you know, when we first looked at the numbers, even knowing that the senior center was built, we didn't meet our goal, and so like, eh, any type A personality in there. And the D O E R is like, no, you guys are doing great, we wanna keep working with you. So, you know, this really sort of gives us the ability to say, look, we wanna do more, and here's another grant proposal to get more money. Michelle, Michelle is great at helping to track this, so there's a lot we can do. If you look at where the potential targets are, obviously the buildings, still an opportunity, the street traffic lights, I think we've done as much as we can, it's now time to reap the benefits. And then on the water sewer, I think that's also a, a big opportunity. So we're continuing to pursue the vehicles, you know, most certainly we wanna keep that trend going with the electric vehicles that they accept, and they're really starting to pay for themselves now. So it's, it's great work, but Michelle's working closely with the D O E R to help identify what else we can do and get some grants to make some of these investments. I think the nice thing is, even with this new building that came online, we still had a reduction, and, and that's because of the efforts that were being put into place, so it's really paying back for the town. Okay, the big one, which is really active in the next eight months, is Community Choice Aggregation, and Steve is gonna talk about this. And we have a couple of charts here to walk through it. This is just gonna be a high level, we don't wanna get into the content right now. We would suggest that maybe we do that at a future meeting. We just wanna give an update on the status, but there's also a big action item tied to public comment that we wanted to present to you. So Steve?
Okay, very briefly, just a refresher as to what the Community Choice Aggregation is. It's a bulk-buying contract for electricity for Cohasset residents and businesses. So the idea is that rather than National Grid choosing the suppliers and passing, passing the power on to consumers, through a, a bulk purchase contract, Cohasset residents would purchase power through a competitive bid process from suppliers, and then that power would again still be passed through National Grid transmission lines to homeowners, and National Grid would continue to provide the billing and customer contact. So that's basically what the, what the program is. Now, I'll give you an update as to where we are. You know, we contracted with Good Energy as our broker to help us through the process in drafting a plan and going through the submittals to the state agencies required. At the moment, we're, we're doing this in tandem currently with Situit and Marshfield, because by pooling our three towns together, we anticipate getting a little bit better deal on the electricity rates. So currently, the plan has been drafted and submitted to the Department of Energy Resources. All three towns have submitted it to the Department of Energy Resources. But Situit and Marshfield are a little bit ahead of us in that they have now completed their two-week public comment period, and that's what we have to address tonight. As a committee, we, we feel like it would be advantageous if we could complete that comment period before the end of the year, and we're hoping that maybe the Board of Selectmen could announce that period at, at their December third meeting, and then it would extend for two weeks. At the conclusion of the, of the two-week comment period, there would need to be a public, a public hearing where residents are invited to come and make oral comments, as well as further written comments. And then these comments would be bundled together and submitted to the Department of Public Utilities for their final approval, and that process takes six to nine months. So, and the idea is that our, our aggregator consultant, Good Energy, would see to it that the Department of Public Utilities would process the applications for all three towns together, so that we can get the approval about the same time and go out to bid together as a group. So that's basically where we are at the moment. So as to what the next steps are, the most important one is to get this review, this public comment period, and then as we go into the spring, should we, oh, we got that up there already, okay. So right now, we're at the plan stage, the second we, we've done the start, that... So right now, we're at the plan stage, the second we, we've done the start, that was the, the annual town meeting. Where we voted to authorize uh Board of Selectmen to uh develop a plan. And so we've come up with a draft for the plan. It's been through the Department of Energy Resources already, and there, there's a meeting scheduled tomorrow, actually. Uh Michelle's gonna participate in any of that, right? And together with representatives of, of Marshfield and Situate to um receive the, the comments from the Department of Energy Resources. Their, their job is to review the plan and to uh comment on it. And then um, so um next we do the, the uh public comment period. Then uh we submit the plan to the DPU. Um and then in the spring and moving into up to a annual town meeting, uh we'll have to um. Uh meet with various town boards and I guess Chris will, you'll help us decide who we have to meet with, right? Um and then uh at, at uh, at town meeting, um we'll ask the voters to uh approve the implementation of the plan. But preceding that, we're gonna have to do a ton of outreach to the community, make sure that everybody is, is well aware of what, uh what the program is. How it works and uh hopefully gain community support for it. Um then assuming that the voters approve implementation, then our energy broker will go out. And with all three towns uh together solicit bids from suppliers and um then we'll evaluate the bids. And uh once, once uh the bids have been evaluated and uh those decisions have been made. And the uh details of the plan finalized with the rates and the amount of renewable energy and the various options. Um then uh we'll uh do a mass mailing to every resident town, we'll get uh information, probably two mailings, I think. Um and they'll have three days to decide which option they would like, they have four choices. Uh they, they can choose uh the, the cheapest plan, the base plan. They can, they can choose um the, the default plan, which will uh still keep the cost below National Grid price. But it'll bump up the amount of renewable energy up to the maximum we can put in there and still stay below National Grid. And, or the um premium plan, which will be a hundred percent renewable uh generation from class one Massachusetts Rex. Which means wind, basically wind and solar and some hydro in Massachusetts. So that's, that's pretty much it.
Question.
Yeah.
Carrie then Dan.
This is fantastic, thank you. I really do think this aggregation is a no-brainer and I'm a hundred percent in favor of getting this comment period done this year. As long as we proceed with doing really good communication, I think, so the town understands what's going on in terms of the opt-in procedures. You explained it really well, Steve.
I, I didn't explain what we're planning on doing an outreach before the uh comment period. Uh but we're, we'll certainly get an article in the Mariner and we'll advert, we'll uh post the, make postings on the Facebook page. Uh and of course, uh your meeting is uh Community Access TV, so uh we're hoping. That the interested part of our community will learn about it that, that way.
And we all can help get the word out too, but I think this is great, I think it's really important for the future of the town and thank you all for the hard work you put into it.
Dan.
Yeah, my question is just the, um you mentioned that there needs to be a public hearing at, at the conclusion of the public review period. So when are you anticipating that might take place?
Well, uh it's a two-week, two-week comment period uh at a minimum.
Yep.
So uh if, if uh you can announce the beginning of the comment period at your December third meeting. Then that would take it up to December seventeenth, which is about the time you'd have a, your next meeting, I assume. Uh and, and if, if you had the time, the comment period could, could uh take place during a Board of Selectmen meeting. If you, if that was, if that's a burden, if you can't do that, then we'll arrange a separate meeting uh for.
So it would be us, it would, we would be the ones holding this hearing. And we can trigger the beginning of the comment period on December third and we could theoretically.
End it on the seventeenth.
End it or with the public hearing on the seventeenth theoretically.
Yeah.
Maybe problematic, it's the chair's challenge with all of, because we do all of our license renewals at that point. And what would we be asking for the comments on, is it, is it?
On the, on the, on the plan, so.
The plan that currently is being finalized.
Basically the um, well, of course, a resident could um make any sort of comment they wish.
Right.
But I would hope they would focus on the aspects of the plan that he has the control over because both, basically.
No guarantees, measure that, yeah.
The plan, the plan is this thick, you know, it's like hundreds of pages.
Right.
Oh my god, but it's mostly all boiler, boilerplate required by state law. But there are some aspects of like the details of the options for the, and maybe the um. Um the, the period for the contract, whether it's two, three, or four years, that could be up for discussion.
So I think just, just for, for future discussion, I mean I think, I think that the choreography of that public hearing. And what the actual presentation is and what the meat of it is so that we manage that process. So that we're actually giving good information and getting good feedback, so.
And, and that's, we're advisors and we're here to assist.
Yes.
So that's why we wanted to bring this to your attention and ask for guidance, what do you need from us? Um what role do you want us to play? How can we facilitate this help? Most certainly, the content, the summary of the plan, we could put together.
Yeah.
And present. Uh you know, one of the things that's important to realize, as Steve said, is some things we can't change. And one of the most controversial might be the opt-out piece.
Right.
That's fixed, it's set by the state. I, I, it took me a while to realize this, but that is the case. Um but there are other things that we do have some flexibility on. So I think it's important to draw those lines and say that at some point, it comes down to, does the town want to do it or not? Not what do you wanna change?
Right, exactly.
And that's what the vote in the spring will be, right?
And I understand the controversy over the opt-in, opt-out, and I understand the optics aren't always clear with that type of thing. But I do think that the intent here is good for all of us, the whole town, for the planet, for everything. And I think that if we communicate that well, I do genuinely think Cohasset citizens will understand that process. So I.
And, and, and I, you know, you can look at this as choice.
Right.
But this is a choice that the town people would not otherwise.
Right, right.
Bulk purchase to get a much cheaper rate, if that's what they choose.
Mm-hmm.
Um bulk purchase that gets a higher environmental content for the same price. If that's okay with them to say, or one hundred percent green at the lowest price they can be able to get. Because we're teaming up with much bigger towns.
Right.
So it, it really is about choice and there are opt-out provisions that occur before and after plus the town meeting. So I think the education is important, the socialization is important, the communication is important. Good Energy is ready to help us, he doesn't wanna get fatigued. Um the other thing is, we should be on, I, I think maybe think about timing with respect to the budget. We, we would like to come before you at a point where you're ready to vote on whether you approve it or not for the town meeting. Because I think it would be important to have your vote, our vote, there might be other committees or not that should vote. But I'm just, being on the advisor, having been on the advisor committee, I'm ve- I'm very well aware of what crunch time is. And we'd like to be in front of that for you.
Uh Jack?
Yeah, um I've been following this with great interest, I remember last spring, there were a bunch of meetings. Um couple of thoughts, number one, on the uh public meeting, I think it'd probably be better to have a standalone. Because I think this is, this is a small room, I think there's gonna be a lot of uh information. Um you know, the opt-out um is going to be um probably spirited discussions. I know a couple of years ago when we discussed it, the opt-out was um kind of what it said was, don't force people in. Um so we should be prepared for that. Clarify, the state enabling legislation requires that you have to put people into the cleaner e- energy thing.
No.
Uh no, it, it, uh the state law requires that it be an opt-out program, you know.
I know the opt-out, but does it require that there be the opt-in?
Uh, no, the way, the way it works is um after the, the bids have been received. And then letters go out to all the residents with a, a card that they could return. And on that card, they have four options. They can pick one of the, the three, three options for the plan, or they can decline to, to participate in the plan altogether. So those are the four options.
Okay.
And if they don't return the card at all, then they'll be put into the default plan. And the state does not specify what the default plan will be. Um we thought we would make it the cheapest plan, or make it the plan that is less than the National Grid rate. But has uh as much uh green energy as we can put into it without exceeding the National Grid.
But depending upon public comment, you can adjust.
That's, that could be changed, right.
That's, that's my real concern.
That's not required by state law, that would be up to us to decide.
I think it's a great idea, but I do think I'm a, I'm a big believer that, you know, people need to make their decisions. And they should come to that decision, and I think most people probably will. It's clearly advantageous and I think the overall plan is advantageous. So I think it's a good idea and I think what we need to do is we need to think about expediting the comment period. Cause they need the comment period done. And I think, in my opinion, it's important to have their own forum. So I don't think we'd have the time here in a Board of Selectmen's meeting, I mean, this might feel. But I think there's a timeline going on and I think we have, I'm in favor of going forward on this.
So on the opt-out, um that means a citizen can opt out and not participate as long as they proactively take the step to send the carrot in.
And, and if somehow, for some reason, they're, they're uh, they missed the whole thing.
Yeah, they can do away.
And they find out two months later that they're in the plan, they don't like it, they can opt out then too.
Right, so I think that being communicated is gonna alleviate, is gonna be a question of communicating. That definitely will have to be, especially when the vote comes, so that people, I think we all understand at home why that is. So when you, you're talking about the um, uh if we commence the comment period, this is something that the Board of Selectmen do, is when I'm hearing from you, this is. So it's the Board of Selectmen need to go ahead and declare a uh, a comment period, at which time we're gonna communicate. Where the citizens can go and review and how to make their comments, I mean that's something you're gonna need to give us to do, okay? So then that goes on for a couple of weeks and then we'll schedule a special meeting where there'll be public, which is sponsored by ourselves. But essentially really, we're gonna need you to run that meeting, right? Unless we're, unless we're gonna.
That's what I was trying to get to, come on.
At which time you, we've done that and then you can take the plan and move it to the next step, is that correct?
That's correct. And then the um in-person comment, which would be at the hearing or the, the public meeting. Doesn't have to be the end of the process, you know, if you wanted to allow for written comments through the end of the year, you could do that too. You know, I, again, I've said many, many, many times, my goal is to make sure that if somebody in town doesn't know about this program, they're living under a rock.
Right.
This is very important, everybody knows, so that um they can't complain they didn't have the opportunity to understand.
Right, so there's just gonna be, as one of you had said, a lot of work in getting all this out all year. We'll all need to work and support that too, I think we will. So I think what's needed is, is for us to, it would seem to me, oh, as far as the, the um, the forum, the, you know, the, the meeting. It doesn't have to be exactly two weeks, it could be three or four weeks afterwards, I'm thinking in terms of setting the date. I mean, you have to do two weeks and then have you got a week or two in which to have the uh.
You know, just be where you're running to Christmas.
Right, but I mean, we don't have time limits other than that, then.
No, no, and this is again, a lot of, it, it wasn't, we were given a quarterly report, right? So the vote isn't necessarily on your agenda, so I don't know if you wanna take a vote now or if you wanna wait till December third. But um that, there's an action item for you to do with respect to announcing the public comment session. And then also delineating how it's going to proceed.
Well, yeah, so I think.
I would wait till the third.
Yeah, I wanna wait till the third so that we can, we need help in knowing what to proclaim to, what to proceed, okay? Cause we haven't had, so between now and the third, work with Chris.
Yep.
So that it can be announced what needs to be done to proceed, Chris, you can do that or whatever it is.
Put the plan on the website.
Yeah.
But then, then the question would be, we can do that now, let's set up tonight the meeting, so that you know you have that date, okay? For the public, for the forum it's called, the public meeting, so it would seem to me maybe after the first of the year.
Yes.
I think it's probably work, cause we have all the meetings.
First. It'll be a special meeting.
Right, and I literally don't have a day off the entire month of December. However, if I heard you correctly, you wanted to try to get this done by the end of the calendar year. So that we could go to DOER with, with the two other communities.
Right, uh right now, um the uh plans for Marshfield and Situate have already been submitted to the DPU. So we're behind the, behind the ball a little bit on that. Uh I, but I talked to our energy broker and he said it should not pose a problem, that he's, he's going to. Um he's confident he can get the DPU to process all three towns' applications, uh plans together, so.
Assuming we get in.
But, yes, but if we were to delay too long, then it might be problematic.
I'm just looking at the calendar, how about January second? Just wanting updates.
Oh, I don't think it's.
What?
I, I, I would think after that week would be better.
Well, we're trying to go quickly, that's all, so we.
No, 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 I'm just saying because I, again, we wanna make sure people don't feel like.
And that's all vacation week, so.
Yeah.
And that's almost more of a.
So when is vacation off then, uh is it, is it on the fourth or fifth that people?
The next week.
Yeah, that's.
How about January fifteenth?
I do it the week before.
How about January eighth? We, we're meeting already to do our goals on the seventh, so we can do this on the eighth, the eighth or the ninth. Town, we could do it on the ninth too.
Eighth, do the eighth, can't do the ninth.
Eighth, okay. Eight, eight, Jack?
Yeah.
Yeah, do that over, do all the comments.
Volca Commons, the eighth is when we're gonna do, what is this called, a public forum?
Public forum.
Public forum.
Public forum.
Right.
So give us what we need so that we can do the best job on the, the third. And then get to work and planning on what we do, Volca, on the eighth, and then off we go and how's that?
And at the public forum, so we have the two-week comment period and then the public forums on the eighth.
It's part of it, we now have a one-month public comment period.
Yeah, if you, if you make the announcement on the third of December, your next meeting, then the clock starts then for the two weeks.
Yeah, yeah, right, of course, so then.
But it could be four weeks.
So it's a four-week public comment period, but on that forum, what is the outcome from there? Is that, do we, do we then talk about the input that we've taken over the four-week public comment period? And that's just kind of the last blast, do we anoint this project, do we have to take a vote?
That, uh, no, no, um you can discuss it if you wish, but if you don't want to, all that happens is that the comments are all collected together. Both the oral and the written comments and put as an addendum to the plan and submitted to the DPU.
Okay, so we don't have to take action that day, other than holding it.
If, if there's enough public comment about part of the plan that we control. You might want to take it up. Um if, if it looks like the plan as presented is generally accepted or fine, a little bit of controversy, not some, you know, this is gonna be your judgment call. And all we have to do is compile the comments and submit it with that plan. If we modify the plan based on those comments, we have to send it back to the DOER, which is fine. Um and we then submit the slightly different plan to the uh DPU um with the comments.
So at what point do we make those decisions though? We're not gonna make them on the eighth, are we?
I don't think so, I would, I would make it, you know.
On our, I'm just thinking, on our very next selectmen meeting, second person meeting, we're gonna have this on the agenda then, Tracy, if you could note that. And so that we can wrap up the public comment period on the very next meeting.
Well, the public comment period can be wrapped up at that meeting, on the eighth.
So we can wrap up what we need to do to conclude, you know, so you can move the next, at the next, so just have that on the agenda, we'll work out the exact words.
Okay, so the meeting after the public forum?
After the forum, that very next one.
Yep.
Put this uh alternative energy and we'll know what to put in there. And so that we can conclude what we need to do so you can move your step forward, okay? Uh Paul?
So just a couple of quick questions, so you have the um, the comment period, you have the forum. Does the Board of Selectmen have to vote on the plan to put it forward or do we just present it to the?
No, you don't have to vote for, on it, uh at the moment, uh you will be voting on it presumably sometime in the spring.
So that'll be, you'll be telling me, so, so our, our role is to present the plan to the, to the public utilities.
Yeah, and you'll vote on it as to, you know, whether you recommend it or not.
Okay, so we would vote saying recommend it to the, part of uh public utilities?
Uh no, no. Uh, no, no, you don't have to recommend it to Department of Public Utilities.
So we can, we can just send it forth to the Department of Public Utilities? They would say, okay, we now have the plan with the following communities that are in the same aggregation, goes back to town meeting, town meeting votes yea or nay.
Right.
Okay, so we don't necessarily have to vote on it, but we present it to Department of Public Utilities.
If there are no changes, or you don't think there need to be any changes, just, I mean, effectively you're voting on it by sending it forward with the compiled comments.
And the vote is really town meeting.
And, by the way, uh, you're not, there are, the main aspects of the plan that we have control over don't have to be finalized in the plan as it goes, before it goes to D P U. For instance, the three options, uh, those can be adjusted, um, uh, after the D P U approves the plan. They don't care so much about that, is my understanding, so.
I mean, I would think there'd be potentially down the road, there may be more options that show up that could be incorporated.
Yeah, I mean, we could put in an extra option, I'm sure that would be all right, we don't have to. But they're more concerned with the, are you satisfying all the state regulations pertaining to the plan? That's what's, what they're concerned about.
Just one thing I would note, part of the benefit potentially of doing this with Situate and Marshfield is if we are aligned on the same type of offerings, we get the benefit of the bulk purchase. If we start creating different types of, so as the plan is currently written, it tries to mimic Marshfield and Situate's as well, so that, that all three options can be put out to bid.
Yeah, I would worry about make, you know, moving too far away from their plan, cause we'd lose part of the.
No, he just, down the road. No, no, I guess that wasn't my point, my point is, you've got the original plans of all three communities, and then five years down the road, there is a new option that comes out, and that could be incorporated in the plan in future date.
Uh, yeah, remember, the, the, the plans, the contracts are for two to four years.
So four years later.
So four years later, say, then we have to redo, go out to bid again, and rethink the options and so forth.
It's not fixed for a thousand years, it's two or four years, got it.
Yeah, right.
And the other question I have is, if you have a net meter in your house, and you've got solar array of wind and, and your net metering fact, are they able to be incorporated in this plan as well?
Uh, but it'd only be for the amount of electricity that your solar array wasn't covering.
Got it, so it'd be only the net negative that we need, got it. Um, and the other one is I looked at the, uh, car miles, you know, you said thirty thousand car miles? Uh, if you had electric vehicles, that would be about, close to a hundred and eighty thousand miles, so.
Wow. So you're moving in that direction.
Yeah, so now you're.
So if you look at the, you know, the town vehicles, you know, that would be, uh, you could drive them forever.
Okay, done, you're trying to get in there.
I, I was just going to say that the, the other piece of this as well is if, uh, towns, some, a citizen of the town is receiving electricity from somebody other than national grid, they are not automatically enrolled in this.
Yes.
That is a separate contract.
Separate contract if you have it.
We might have to do some research into what does that mean for the wall, or for some other arrangements with national grid.
Right, a person in that, a consumer in that situation, if they wanted to, um, take advantage of the, of our community aggregation, they would have to cancel their plan, they would not be enrolled automatically.
It might be helpful to just get a, kind of like a frequently asked question or an F A Qs, one pager for people that, basic answers for this.
Yes, yeah, we, we, we have a F A Q.
Okay, great.
Yeah, full-blown marketing thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be helpful, I'm sure I can see that already.
You guys are pros.
And we have to put together a summary of the plan also. Uh, the entire plan is on the town website, on your, on your page actually, already, uh, together with this sheet, it's on there. But, uh, we need to, um, do a summary of, I think, of, of the plan and the aspects of it that, uh.
Okay, so with this all said, and what is it that we're gonna need to do on the meeting after the, in January? If we're not voting on anything, what is the, what is, what's, what are we doing on that meeting then?
I think that meeting, you, it's up to you, you can choose to do nothing, or you can, and decide, okay, well, this was great, everybody supports it, let's send it in, or you could say, well, there are some controversial issues, let's discuss it, do, does this rise to changing the plan? Or you could say, um, you know, we want to make a formal vote regardless, one way or the other, just to, this is up to you.
Yeah, I understand. So that means that on that meeting, we're gonna need to have a report to us as to what the results of the comment period were. So somehow is, can you, are you working with Chris to? In other words, I, if that's the case, then we're gonna need to have a report to us before the meeting, cause this is what the comments, these are the things for you to consider and organize it, so we can be productive on that. So I'll leave that to, we'll leave that to, between Chris and yourselves to organize, and we'll act on it at that meeting, okay?
Okay.
Great.
Great.
Anything else?
Uh, just the next steps, the last page, on December ninth, we are having a meeting, uh, to review the potential projects and establish our priorities for twenty twenty. The initial list includes some exciting projects, helping, um, finding out how we need to assist, or if there is any assistance we need to provide for the L E B streetlights, E V charging stations under the Green Communities Grant, uh, new electric vehicles for the town, facilitate energy efficiency options for the town and readiness. Uh, there's a new program Solarize Plus Heat Smart, where it's an opt-in program, um, do we wanna pursue that? Uh, co-acid battery storage, a microgrid demonstration project, we're thinking about computer, community choice, um, electric aggregation is obviously gonna have to be one of our priorities, um, it's because it does. But, so we're gonna be thinking through this, but anything you have that you might want us to consider?
So on the community battery storage, micro, what is that?
So the, on that one, batteries have become very energy efficient, actually, Steve, you're so, and talk about the batteries. Yeah, and, and I will say, Henum just entered into one of these contracts, which is why we have some key insight into how it can help us.
So battery storage, and it's so, and on the size, we can actually make a small microgrid in the, in the area within town using battery storage.
So this is one of the things that I, from what I've read about, if this is what I, what I have read about, that communities can use in cases of power outages, they go to their microbattery.
Yep.
Like Nanpuck, just Tesla ones.
Okay, so, I'd like to give you the, the input that you make that something of a priority, because that's very important to this.
Because we lose power a lot, so we also.
Oh, no, I guess, did you say lose?
We lose power a lot.
A lot.
Steve, Steve and I looked at this a couple of years ago, and I think we had presented it to you. Um, Steve actually drove around and figured out where the switch is. It turns out, we are the perfect demonstration project. Uh, we have a very centralized set of buildings, schools, church, uh, the senior center, the fire department, the police department, um, churches, all within two switches. And you can turn those switches off and power up the microgrid, other than us and the microgrid, the town.
Okay, so, the municipal vulnerability study that we did, as well as the master plan, which several of us were on, targeted this as one of the primary concerns of the community. So I don't wanna be repetitive, but this, I'd like to see number one, now, if you could do something substantive in this area here, that would be very much appreciated by the community, in fact, I'd like to see you do that. Board wants to give you the nod too. This is very important, this community, very inter, this community is very, so we'd like, I'd like to see that number, number one.
Okay.
Like you said, I don't need to repeat that, right? But all of our studies, all of our analysis, all of our conversations, and all the nights we've been without electricity, freezing in the blanket, um, of our, this is a community that really would be interested in.
I'd just go over and plug into his car.
Yeah, we can do that, we can do that. Um, we, we originally looked at that one and a half mile radius.
Excuse me, yeah.
But, but we could also look at it from the perspective of the entire town.
Right, look big.
You know, we're at the end of the line, and that line runs through the woods, that's the problem.
No, we know that, right. So look big, look for the entire town, make, make this a very big, make this a priority.
Now, there's a cost associated with this, but there might be grants, so, anyway, we, we hear you a lot in public.
We'll, we'll have to work with it, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, right, speaking of boy, okay, yeah, yeah.
There's still, there wasn't one caveat, is, is, is it would be land, town land, along the roads, and it would be, have to be used.
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah.
Guess, guess who's in charge of the land in town?
Yeah.
Yeah, um.
I don't know. This one.
Excuse me, but also guess who gets all the phone calls when the lights are out in town?
All of the, right.
That's why you're seeing us all jumping up and down too.
As, as a quick joke, though, I put a full house generator in, in, uh, last July. I have seventy-five hours on it in one year.
Yeah.
Wow.
That is a lot.
No joke.
Yeah.
However, I think we, in all the enthusiasm, if we're gonna talk about, uh, power, we have to understand really what happens when the power goes out is the lines come down. And, but that's, I think it's something we might discuss, discuss in another board of selectmen.
For sure, we have discussed that in the past, actually, but that, no, no, that's definitely important, Jack.
Um, another item, and we will discuss this on December ninth, but it's one of the potential priorities. We may have a wish list of potential leases that we want to bring to the town meeting, like the school roofs, renew the town approval to lease the school roofs, to take advantage of potential solar opportunities. Um, the fire department roof might be able to be used, some land that maybe we can investigate and identify as good for storage or good for other things, so, or even to put storage where the solar array is. So that would be a one-year delay if we don't take it proactively, and so we may come to you in anticipation of putting this on the warrant, if we identified some, um, no-brainer potential lease options, ask the town to give us pre-approval, so that we can act quickly if opportunities, regulations change, a queue suddenly opens up, to, to jump on that.
Yes.
Just, uh, this might be a segue into our next, uh, agenda item, but, um, it's a town manager update, but is there anybody from your committee currently serving on the town hall building committee? And, and again, that, you know, that is another project that is looming large, and, and it could ultimately, will put another building online, you know, in a few years, but it'll also potentially give us a lot of savings. So I, 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 I believe Josiah Stevenson was, was a liaison from alternative energy to the town hall building committee, and I just think it's probably worth, and, and Chris can do a better job at kind of teeing that up at the right time, but it's probably something that, uh, you all should kind of stay aware of, cause it's, it is gonna be a significant, uh,
Yes.
uh, bump in, in a couple different directions at a couple different times.
So we will put that on our agenda for December ninth, and try to get a liaison who can start attending. And, uh, the other topic that did come up in this context is trying to be much more proactive and forward-thinking with respect to energy efficiency investments, um, that putting, replacing a boiler with more efficient boiler, when we could take a different route and get that much more savings for not much more money, plus grants.
Right, mm-hmm, yes.
Um, I think that would be something that we'd like to be able to contribute to, and even if it's challenging decisions, or trying to be there at the beginning, so we don't have to challenge it after the fact and saying, look, there's other stuff out there. Here's a list of vendors, people from the town can take a look at, you know, just facilitating decisions that are beneficial.
And, 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 and again, and Chris is, is kind of the point person on, on all of this, but I, I mean, maybe even considering a liaison to capital budget, just to watch, cause they do have five, ten-year, um, uh, capital plans that they, that Chris is, Chris and his staff have put together, but they kind of work in tandem on moving those things in and out, so. Just to be aware that they're planning to do the new school roof in twenty twenty-one, or whatever the years are, so.
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two, all right, I was only a year off.
It would be great to get solar on the school roof, so I would, that'd be great, so.
That's where it all started, right?
This is where it all started. And, and the sizing, I think, if you're looking at the savings that we're getting now, of course, it would depend on pricing, but, you know, there's still opportunity for savings.
Oh, yeah.
Clearly.
Is there any hope for any wind issues? I know we don't necessarily wanna plop down a windmill in the middle of the common, but I just didn't know of that, cause I haven't heard you mention that.
I tried, I guess.
You have, you.
I tried.
The whole has one, right?
Two.
Two.
I, I think that the, uh, the co-acid bylaw on wind, uh, kind of concludes citing a wind turbine in.
We tried and never got.
We tried, we tried.
It's happened a number of years.
I, I, I need to learn that history.
There was a near.
We, we.
But of course. Reorganization of society over.
Just makes the oyster farms look tame.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, okay?
My assistant's safe, Parkin was, uh.
I just, I had to ask, I had to ask.
You ask a good question, and the reality is, there's a lot happening with technology that regulations and markets haven't caught up with, and one of the microgrid pieces of it may be the electric charging stations, right? We are a community that's demographically going to be a cluster of electric vehicles first, and so there are maybe some creative ways of thinking. Uh, but we're open to everything, it's just a question of what's economic, what makes sense, what can be passed, what doesn't have potential liability, and, um, taking advantage of those opportunities. And we obviously have incredible experts, um, on this committee, which, again.
All, all of you do really good work.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All of you do, yeah. I was saying, it's a very impressive committee, it's seen by yourselves, and that's why we're glad to support.
Yeah.
Support you, comfortable when you need that support. Anything else?
Not for most.
Anything else on the board?
Less paper.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm gonna die.
Thanks.
We're in the tar pit.
Okay, the next, uh, item on the agenda, town manager, town hall project.
I have a couple of updates. So the committee will meet again on, uh, next week, Monday, at which point, um, we're gonna start the next phase of owner's project manager hiring, uh, down to, uh, the finalists, and also discuss staff relocation, that's a critical piece of this. We also have a quick update on timing of the records management piece, cause I know that that's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, that's, that'll be next week, um, so, any questions on that right now?
Are you, you, you have the, the bids from O P M's, and it would be?
Yeah, so, we're down to, the, the, the committee took a quick look, has taken a thorough look, and it's now down to the finalists, and now the committee will be able to decide how to go through the process that involves.
So, the things, when we do the goals on the seventh, which is, um, I, I like to really look, you know, quite closely at what realistically, where we stand on the town hall project, and what we can realistically, and what we may be bringing to town hall, and, you know, I just wanna zero in on that. We're gonna go over all the goals, but I think we, you can, and the committee can look for us to make some decisions there, cause, you know, it may be, well, let's see what we realistically are able to do.
I think there's. I think there's, I think there's a slow gel in the opinion on some, some certain, certain key points. And I'm also looking to try to fill the seat that Fran Collins, they get to join the advisory committee, he's kind of liaising, uh, as well.
Can I interrupt for just, Phil Lair spoke to me, and I had him speak to Paul.
I, I, I met with him last week, we haven't, we haven't seen the conversation.
I know, I know, and then he talked to me at church, hour and a half with Wayne Sawchuk, I turned it over to Paul. He emailed me today, I think we got him.
Great.
Yeah, you gotta share the meeting, I'll see.
It's gonna come on Monday, yeah, so he promised me that he considers.
We're gonna hook him, line him.
Casey's watching, can we go to the next side?
Yeah, this is a public meeting.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So what I've just passed out, uh, is, uh, the, just, all of this, all the October building materials are on the OneDrive, so you can look at them at your ledger. I just printed out just the chart, the, you know, the, the, the quick hit chart there for you, I'll take a quick look at. In some substance, we're doing okay, a couple of highlights, um, licenses and permits are lagging, uh, which is not a surprise, though I, I think it's something we, we need to pay attention to. We did get a, the money.
Excuse me, licenses and permits of what?
Uh, that's licenses and permits on the general fund, that's building permits, and things eventually.
And so is, is this showing another, another slower year in building, is it?
Yeah, yeah, we're clearly seeing a slower year.
So therefore we may see that, was down to five hundred thousand this year, maybe less, or whatever, or whatever.
We'll have to see how it plays out, um, but there's clearly less going on, um. And we've already seen that happen this year, though I, I, you know, there, there is one large building that's kind of flexible, that moves one way or the other, we'll pick that up.
Yeah.
We did get a forty-three thousand dollars back, uh, for the streetlights from an international grid grant, so we got that money back, which is great. Both sewer and water are doing okay, they're both a little bit behind, uh, and that's partly, uh, because of just timing, but it's also partly because, um, they're first quarter financial, uh, they're running ahead, uh, sewer's actually running ahead last year, but they're a little bit behind. You, you wanna have a fat turn.
Yep.
Uh, and you'll see there's a little spike in both police and fire overtime, part of that is due to there were three pay periods in October, so they seem a little bit bigger till we caught you, so, and that said, there have been some, uh, unfortunately, there always seem to be injuries, and we're running a little short, uh, Chief Simeon has been fighting uphill battles to get to this fall on staff, so you met three tonight. we're running a little short, uh, Chief Saviya has been fighting uphill battles to get to this fall off of staff, so you met three tonight. We're still only at twenty-one, we have a twenty-second of the pipeline, we just have to get a little budget of twenty-four.
Yep.
So, um, it's a uphill battle, so, um, that's, um, so if anyone has any questions on the budget, we're, we're, uh, uh, we'll have, we'll do a, a more, we'll do quick monthlies, and then we'll do a bigger, Donald will do this every quarter to go through the year, so the next big one will be right before we do.
So, we roughly look like we're on budget, is this accurate?
Yeah, we're running a little bit behind last year, but we're okay, uh, because last year we had a surplus, so we're doing, you know, we're doing okay. We'll have to see how the state shakes out revenues, as Paul notes, are good at the state level, um, so, uh, we should be okay. We know we're gonna get some more CPC money, which doesn't affect the budget directly, but helps other projects, and I know, uh, we'll have to see what the school, the new school uh, bill that's being passed, how that affects special ed and stuff, it won't help us from a base revenue.
This year, yeah.
Uh, you know, chapter, it won't give us better chapter seventy, because we're just not gonna see that, but we'll see other, other benefits, so. Um, to plug into the budget, so we've, I've been having ongoing conversations with the advisor committee, and, uh, we're gonna reintroduce something we did a couple of years ago, fiscal forums, we'll do three of them in December, the fifth, the tenth, and the nineteenth, so we'll do three. December will be a busy month. Um, we're gonna do it at six-thirty, we'll do it with the community room, with the high school, everyone is invited to attend and participate. The schools are gonna do the tenth, they picked that date as theirs, um, they'll probably do a look at trends, you know, population trends and, and teacher trends and all of that, uh, we will also spend more on the meetings, probably the one on the nineteenth, do a little more look at the five-year forecast, how it's built, where it is, and what's going on, and an update on the ten-year capital plan. We also will be giving a, this board, an update on the ten-year capital plan, probably on the seventh of, of December, that's probably the meeting we're working at now. Not, the third is already chock full of stuff for you guys, so I think the seventeenth will do the, the ten-year capital plan update. Uh, and we'll probably do, uh, I'll look at, there's a number of other things, um, growth, we talked about where we are in that, benefits, employee trends, energy and tech efficiency, we talked about that here. I think that might be one of the, a part of our focus. We've also talked with the, some of the folks on advisory about doing something in the spring on budget education. Um, some folks wanted something fun, so we'll see what we can do, um, and, and I know Carrie wants to do something fun with that, so we might be able to try a couple of videos just to educate people about what the budget is and.
Yeah, I think of. We could use my phone.
Yeah, so, um, we can have fun with budgets.
Good. Fun with numbers, call it.
Fun with numbers.
We can evolve.
Uh, Schoolhouse Rock, it'll be Townhouse Rock. Um, so those are the three dates, um, the final labor contract was settled today, that was our police and tenants' contract, which for some reason is a little bit beginning.
One person, congratulations.
So, we settled that, so, uh, I'm gonna ask for a short executive session on the third, just to brief you all on that. If you have any questions, then ratify it in open session, um, it's a fairly simple contract. Uh, and just one other thing, um, that I want to touch base with you on, so, we've been talking about ways to engage the community and reach out using electronic media and social media, there's something called Flashvote, uh, which I'd seen, demonstrated, Sudbury's used it. It's a, it's, it's a community polling feature, which has people sign up, so you sign up with a company, um, and, and they get your basic demographic data, uh, and then the town can decide to do a poll question, up to five questions.
Interesting.
Uh, it, it gets pushed out, they, they, they frame the questions, approve them, they get, they go out, and there's no app, it's just, you know, it's pushed out to you by text or email, or, you know, you can live talk to somebody if you wanted. Questions are answered, and it's, it's done in a, you know, that you have a statistically significant chunk of the population, uh, and then you get demographic data back, you never know who answered what, okay, that's always shielded, it's always anonymous. They know the demographic, we can see the demographic data, we can say, you'll put a geo-fence around something and say, ah, the people around the common feel this way about parking, or whatever the case may be.
We saw that.
Uh, yeah, so, so, we know what how people feel about parking, so, um, so, I'm looking at that, I think we could do something fairly inexpensively, and we'll give it a try.
Give a look at it.
Um, it, it started Sudbury, in fact, the CEO was from Sudbury, but it was in, it's based in Reno, I don't know why it's based in Reno, but, uh. Except it's a statistically significant survey money, the thing about Survey Monkey, as great as it is, it, you can.
The methodology is flawed.
Yeah, you, you can, you can cram the boat, you can pack the boat, right?
I, I would suspect that if we started going into that, we would wanna have a public outreach very early, because that raises all kinds of privacy issues, whether or not they're valid, but I can assure you that that's something that, uh, that we would want to thoroughly vet, because we could just create a firestorm, which, that would do nobody any good, or we might find that people think it's a good idea, but I, I'd have a little caution of that.
I'm just starting out there, so.
Well, as you develop it, bring it to us, we'll discuss it more, then see what, how it looks to us, it sounds.
That's one of the big things, uh, that, uh, that Jack, that was an issue, we wanna make sure that it's, that it's privacy protections, right? And it's been used all around the country, so feel free to go to his website, take a look, uh, and Sudbury has used it in some other communities in the area, so, uh, Flashvote, it's a little flash vote.
Flashvote, okay.
Uh, so that is the up, that's my quick.
On the budget thing, can I?
Yes.
Yeah, um, I think three months ago, um, there was some discussion here about the uncollected conservation commission fees, and at that time, you know, I'd asked you to, you said you were gonna look into it, and you haven't gotten back to me, and could, could we ask you to find out why the, I mean, sixty thousand for one, a hundred forty thousand for another, I think it's time that we all find out how that's going.
So, I actually had a conversation with council on that last week, um, and I'm planning to have a meeting with the conservation committee chair to talk about steps, uh, without going into too much great depth. Um, one of them involves, um, fines on, that were imposed, again, fines being used as a tool to drive, to drive, um, compliance, right? It's not a revenue generator, um, and, and there's a, there's been a, there's been an ownership change there, so the question is, how does it apply and how is it affected, and so I, I, Jeff and I actually had a conference call last week, so it's great.
Yeah, I mean, I had asked you, and I would appreciate it, getting back, and, and we do have a, a, an opinion from council on that, and just for the board to know. Those kinds of, uh, fines, they go with the property, um, you can change, it's like the property tax lien, it goes through the property, it's an obligation of the property, however you reorganize a partnership, doesn't, you know, affect that. And I think from conservation, it wasn't, it was as an enforcement, I mean, this is, any fine is an enforcement, a parking fine is an enforcement. I was involved with one of those, and we bent over backwards to give Mr. Ortlheid all the benefit of the doubt to move forward, and we, we would say, we're going to do this, do this now if you don't do this. So, it was a very measured, very slow process, and our intent was not, I was on the conversation, the con- conservation, intent was not to do anything other than you need to get this done, and obviously, nothing was done. And the other, uh, fine is again, a, a person who we've had issues in two separate properties, um, of just blatant non-compliance, and that, I mean, again, it goes to, to the property, so, um, I just would like.
Have something like that get resolved.
Well, i- it's, it, one, one of the challenges here is that they're not self-enforcing, you actually have to turn them into judgments and a court has to decide that they're legitimate.
Yes.
Uh, and it's a complicated and not inexpensive process, so, um, it's not like we have a check cash hold for a hundred forty thousand or sixty thousand or any amount of money, so there, there's, uh, and again, uh, the, I have a planned meeting with the conservation commission chair and council, we're gonna try to meet together and talk about the next phase.
Oh, you'll, you'll get back to us with that, then, you know, when you're ready to discuss it with us and let us know, okay?
Yeah. I, I think there's, there's some decisions that have to be made, um,
Free after the time, yeah.
potentially by you folks, uh, if this, if there has to be action taken to effectuate stuff, um, and, and policy decisions about, whatever, so.
Okay.
But I, I, I am working.
You're working on it.
This is, by the way, just point of information, we've been working on this in conservation, and there's a question, it's like a parking ticket, you have to go to court to get an order to get it, um, it's not rocket science, I mean, we, we have the right to enforce it. You do get a court order, in one case, we got a court order, he ignored it, we actually, he was, he was dumping, um, yard waste in our water supply, and so the chief Wiggly actually sent an officer to bring him into, uh, Quincy Court, and guess what, it got cleaned up pretty quickly.
Most of these are, most of these are enforcement-based, I mean, to be clear, there's been, there was a very egregious situation at Whitehead, and that's still not resolved, that's multiple years in, in the running, and that, and those fines have not been fully settled yet.
That's right.
So, there, it, it's not as, they're a tool, they're a very, very important and effective tool in the toolbox.
We did get them to move all that stuff out.
And that, that was the goal, right, the goal, i- they, they, at the end of the day, they, it had to be used, and we've actually gotten injunctions, I mean, the town has actually in the last couple of years gotten injunctions to force action. Uh, I, I think people realize that, that when the town, the town's for real, the town's for real, it's to support a conservation decision to support another decision. Uh, but I, I, I will follow up, uh, with all of you, so.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Chris.
Yeah.
I look forward to hearing from you.
Okay, anything else, uh, you have good, a slight comment?
I, I need any more questions, anything?
Yeah, Chris?
Nope.
Um, Diane?
Um, no, I haven't had anything at this point.
I'm.
I got nothing, sorry. Not that late.
We're only an hour behind. We were on time at one point, we were on time at.
Right.
And then you showed up.
Yeah, showed up, you know, my big mouth.
I'm all set.
I'm all set.
You all set?
I'm all set.
Okay, I'll take a, oh, no, I won't, uh, minutes of ten twenty-nine.
Make a motion to approve the mouths of ten twenty-nine to thousand nineteen.
Uh, I want you to throw in the next one, too.
And eleven-five, two thousand nineteen, what's the like?
Yeah.
Second, and, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, Janice, Mr. Tracy, no topics, uh, do I anticipate from the last twenty, forty-eight hours? I'll ask for a, uh, motion to adjourn this meeting, second, and all those in favor say aye.
Second.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Yeah, that's all.